Emmanuel Baptist Church of Jesus Christ of Beaumont, Texas. If everyone would please silence your cell phones and if you so choose, please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor?
Let us bow. God our Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be here today and for this great august body that gathered here to make decisions concerning our futures. We ask that their hearts will be set up on your agenda this night, oh heavenly Father, and that you guide their thoughts as they sit and discuss the things that need to be done. We also ask that you would continue to look upon all the personnel that works on our day to day and those persons, oh God, who make our city what it is. And we pray that at the end of the day, when all is said and done, that our city would be better and this great city would be better because of the thoughts and the decisions that are made here in this meeting. We ask, God, that the words of our mouths and the meditations of our hearts, that they would be acceptable in your sight because you are our strength and our Redeemer. In your son, Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner.
Present.
Councilmember Duryo.
Present.
Councilmember Hillier. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Sherwood and Councilmember Crenshaw. Thank you.
All right, today we have one proclamation and we have three presentations. And first, we're going to have a proclamation recognizing July 30th, 2025, is World Day Against Trafficking in Persons. And accepting will be Ms. Lisa Bowler, founder of Embracing Freedom. And anybody that you brought with you, please feel free to bring them up. And if you would, come around and shake everybody's hand. Is Trey? Yes, can we get a picture real quick? Normally do it at the beginning. Good job. Hang on. Have everybody in. All right, all look right here and one, two, and three. We got it. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor West and council city members. My name is Lisa Bowler and I'm the founder and CEO of Embracing Freedom. I want to begin by sincerely thanking the city of Beaumont for recognizing July 30th, 2025, as World Day Against Trafficking in Persons. This proclamation is deeply meaningful, not only for our organization, but for the countless young people across southeast Texas who have experienced trauma of human trafficking and child sex trafficking. By aligning with the United States' global observance, Beaumont is sending a strong message to and compassionate message that we stand with our survivors, that we see them and that we are committed to being a part of the solution. In 2024, Embracing Freedom served 81 survivors of child sex trafficking. Our mission is to serve youth who have been impacted by commercial sexual exploitation and trafficking. We do this through prevention, education, direct advocacy, and 24/7 crisis support. In 2024 alone, our team conducted over 765 crisis intervention services, each representing a young life facing uncertainty and deserving of hope and support. This proclamation not only raises awareness, it enforces our city's commitment to protect the vulnerable. It demonstrates that Beaumont refuses to look away and is willing to lead the fight in child sex trafficking. Thank you so much. This means very much to us.
Thank you, and thank you for all that y'all, that you and the organization do here in the community. And I know the governor recognizes y'all and y'all do travel across the state. So we're so pleased to have you and your commitment to getting this off the ground. And now you've got a successful organization that's making a big difference. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, council.
Next, we have the city of Beaumont communication update.
Well, good evening, council and everyone. You get the B team tonight with me over here. So y'all can pray for Tracy. She's been feeling a little ill the last few days. But we got a few announcements coming up. First off, we have for BISD, students are getting ready to head back to class and the first day is going to be on August 13th. And there are still several opportunities for you to pick up free school supplies. On August 2nd, you can stop by Odom Academy, starting at 9:00 a.m. or at Magnolia Park, starting at 8:00, while supply is last over there. And on August 9th, also, we will have supplies handed out at the Sterling Pruitt Activity Center at 8:00 in the morning or at Longshoreman's Hall at 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon. And you can check out BISD's Facebook page for more details about all this stuff. And you can see on the graphic too, all those little graphics you see, those are also on the Facebook page. You can get more information with that. And if you'd like more information about how to register your child for free breakfast, you can also go to BeaumontISD.com and get more info for that there. Our next announcement is for Beaumont Animal Care. In just a few days, on July 31st, we have National Mut Day. And Beaumont Animal Care is going to be celebrating this with an adoption event. Adoption fees will be $20 and that's going to be available for all animals at the shelter. And it's going to include your spaying, your neutering, microchipping, first set of vaccines, free flea prevention and your dewarmer. And we do want to mention that as of last Friday, too, the shelter was urgently over capacity with 122 animals in need of adoption. So please go by over there and pick up your new best friend. Also coming up later this week, you can enjoy jazz at the lake with headliner saxophonist Dean James. This will be coming up on Thursday evening and it's going to run from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Downtown Event Center. Again, this is a free event. It's open to the public and you can come out and enjoy a great live jazz and the concessions they'll have, too. Also coming up soon, on Friday, August 8th, we are going to have our last free summer movie in the park. This is going to be at Central Park and they're going to be playing the movie If. You can feel free to bring your blanket or your lawn chairs and even some snacks and you can enjoy this movie Under the Stars and it will start at dusk. One more thing, too. You can stay up to date with all the events happening around Beaumont by downloading our free Beaumont Events app. So you don't have to miss, you know, a chance to miss out on all the entertainment we have, too. And we have one final announcement also. As y'all know, hurricane season is here and we encourage everyone to get prepared before the storm enters the Gulf, too. And one of the important things we want you to have ready is a go bag. And if you don't know what that is, you can take a look at this video over here. Our own city councilman, Chris Durio, is featured in this video along with other state leaders who join the Texas General Land Office. And you can get the message about what you need to put in this go bag. And what we'll do, that'll actually be, once the video is done playing, that'll be all of our announcements we have for this week. So you can go ahead and roll that.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. Good job.
This hurricane season, we want to make sure that everybody is prepared. Have all the supplies you need, ready to go in a bag, such as your electronics. Don't forget your charging cords and put it in the bag.
Don't forget your pillow and your blanket. Oftentimes during hurricanes, the drive's long. You're not sure where you're going to stop. And so it's always important to have your pillow and your blanket.
We can't get louder.
Make sure you pack some toys and some activities for your kids to do and make sure you put that in the bag.
This is a personal estate kit. Make sure you have one of these. They always come in handy.
I'm sure Councilman Duryo would like us to do that. So go ahead.
This hurricane season, we want to make sure that everybody is prepared. Have all the supplies you need, ready to go in a bag, such as your electronics. Don't forget your charging.
May not be your day, Councilman Duryo. That's right. All right, I think we'll proceed. We've got a, we've got a, technology happens, no worries. Next, we have a presentation on the 2025 bond facilitation update and recommendation. And Mr. June Ellis, Assistant City Manager, is going to, please come up and introduce Mr. Barton. Put you on the spot.
Yeah, I didn't realize that, but good afternoon, council and mayor. The city actually, over the last two and a half to three years, the city has been working on its annual community investment plan, the annual CIP. And in that CIP, over the last two and a half to three years, we have assumed that we would have a bond election of major projects that would go before the voters. Each time we produced that document, we brought it to city council. And for the last two years, the city council has approved the CIP. So the bond election that's proposed and the process that the city has gone through is not something new. It's also something that was discussed when the city put together its strategic plan back in 2023, so maybe two and a half years ago. So a lot of the projects are in the city's strategic plan. Many of the projects are in the city's community investment plan that has been approved by the city council over the last two years. So we began the process maybe seven or eight months ago where we issued an RFP to hire a bond facilitation consultant. City council approved that consultant and we began the process of going down this road to have a bond election and to identify those projects. City council appointed 17 board members to be part of the Beaumont Bond Advisory Committee. And most of those members attended those meetings and put together recommendations for a possible bond election. So at today's meeting, we will have the bond facilitation consultant, Mr. Jeff Barton with Gap Strategies, present to city council the recommendations, the process and the recommendations from the Beaumont Bond Advisory Committee. So I ask Mr. Barton to come up. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, June. Council members, it's a pleasure to be here again. As advertised, I'm Jeff Barton with Gap Strategies. My business partner, Kara Buffington, is also here and will come forward to kick me in the ankles if I mistake anything along the way. As you heard, we were selected by a public process to work with the city of Beaumont and to facilitate a group of, a group of your citizens. I want to say that it was a great group. We had some changes. Some of you here started off on the committee, in fact. It was a, it was a great group of folks and you should be proud of them. They did well with their attendance, Mr. Mayor. Really, one member was only able to attend one meeting, but the rest, the other 16, really were able to participate in a very robust way. So we felt very good about that. Our team consisted of myself and Ms. Buffington. And we had some additional help that some of you met along the way back in the office to help fill in. Next, Tina. Just a little background about us. As you see, we've got a strong staff that includes a number of people who've been involved in public government and public finance for many, many years and have done a lot of facilitation work and urban planning work all over the state of Texas. Kara and I really led the effort. We're the primary principles in Gap Strategies. And we started off, let me cut to the chase and say that we're going to get to a very strong and in fact unanimous recommendation from your committee, from those who were present at the last meeting, that you do move forward with a bond package with some specific recommendations. So the good news is you had a strong committee. And even better news is that they came to a very strong consensus around what should be represented or at least recommended to the city council. I thought it might be helpful to give you a little bit of background on how we got to where we are with this recommendation. So we started by introducing your citizen volunteers to what we call Bonds 101 and walk them through what it means to have a bond election. If you can go to the next slide there. And, you know, it's worth, we reminded them and it may be worth reminding you all, it has been a little while since Beaumont had its last general obligation bond. Michael Jackson was doing the moonwalk and our vice president JD Vance had not been born yet in 1983, when you had your last GO bond, which was a $16 million bond related to drainage. Next, Tina. So we walked your committee through, you know, the idea that bonds are really just a financial tool for cities to issue long-term, low-interest debt. And you can get low interest because cities are such a reliable place for investors to loan money and it's a tax-free instrument for the investors. That gives you long-range, low-interest debt that can be repaid often over 20 years. Next. And there are a number of advantages to that. It can spread the costs of capital improvements over a longer life. The cost is shared not only with current taxpayers, but with future taxpayers who are going to be moving into the city with future businesses, maybe even people who will take advantage of the improvements that these bonds bring. So it eases the impact on the city's current budget, spreads out those effects, just the way that many people buy a home rather than paying for it in cash. They buy it over time to get the benefits of it now. Now, general obligation bonds do require voter approval if the council decides to move forward. Tina? There are a few types of bonds. We walked the citizens through that. Next, Tina. And the kinds of rules and limitations on each bond. So we gave them a little bit of history, Tina, and all of that. But again, we're talking here about a GO bond or general obligation bond. So your citizens, I think, really kind of came up to speed on the financial status of the city, on some of the history of bonds and what it means to call a bond election. And then we, we had a lengthy process over a series of months here with hours and hours that your fellow citizens gave to the city for this. And the idea really was initially to assess really the needs, wishes of department heads, the kinds of projects that have been identified by the city over time, look at the potential financial and tax impacts, engage community assessment through listening, prioritize those projects and make this report back to city. Tina? We made it clear and your staff made it clear to citizens that this would be a recommendation to the city council. The final word is of course up to the city council about whether to call a bond package. And we got support not only from your staff, but from your outside financial advisors and legal counsel, bond counsel, as well as your very capable in-house counsel here about the scope of the bond project to make sure that our recommendations were clear. We also told your committee members that there was no limit. They could recommend no bond package. They could recommend small bond package, a big bond package. It was really up to them. We just helped facilitate them through the process, thinking about what they thought were the most urgent needs for the city of Beaumont. This was really based on something that we've developed working with many cities over many years. You can see the gray in my beard these days called community-based consent that Gap Strategies developed based on some work by Dr. William Urie at the Harvard School of Laws and Negotiation that really emphasized trying to build consensus, but letting people have their say, making sure that everybody gets a chance to express themselves, whether they agree or disagree. But really, spending a lot of time, as we did with the committee, talking about, you may not get your ideal, but are you getting something you feel good about in the end and that you think is good for the broader community? Is it something you can live with and does it reconcile opposing interests? So as I said, the discussion was really open to all sides. We looked for consensus where possible and informed consent. And then also took votes along the way, both in, you know, by hand and by roll call and by some technology that we use just to facilitate discussion and make sure that no one loud voice dominates and everybody gets their say. Though preliminary work began with your staff before this, the committee itself began meeting in April and concluded its work last week at the July 22nd sixth meeting. Along the way, there was also an open house, a really substantial community survey. And we'll talk more about those in a moment. Tina? So a few things that we'll be referring to, some tools and trends that again are worth mentioning for you and those who may be watching today. We started with the plans that you heard your assistant city manager allude to, the work that you have already done as a city over years to develop a community investment plan, strategic plans developed by the council, the parks plan that you committed, you completed just earlier this year. It itself had a lot of public input and public process and many other plans across the city. We, we began, we really put those into a kind of a funnel, you might say, with a lot of work by your staff to look at what might be most relevant for the committee and walk the committee through those issues. Immediately, on the next slide, you'll see that some issues we identified as able to be funded elsewhere, either through grants, for instance, or maybe they're already funded in your annual budget or through COs or some other mechanism. Other projects just didn't reach the level for committee members of urgency to be in this bond. We developed three tiers. Tier one was yes, it needs to go in this bond. Tier two was maybe, and that discussion carried on through the process and sometimes into the open house. And tier three was no, not in this bond. It doesn't mean it's not a worthy project. It just means that citizens on your committee did not think it needed to be paid for in this bond right now. So we started off with more than $1.35 billion in projects that could be done in the city of Beaumont. True public investment that is needed. And your citizens really, over these months, prioritized that down to just over $200 million, the number that you're, we're going to talk more about today. We, we had a number of spreadsheets. Citizens had homework. They filled out surveys. Your BBAC, Beaumont Bond Advisory Committee, filled out surveys in between the meetings. The meetings often ran two to three hours, hour and a half to three hours. So they were very diligent. And we had spreadsheets that we updated for each meeting that people worked with, looking at the numbers. This is what we used Mintimeter so that the citizens could vote on their phones in the meetings. We'd have discussion and people would vote. That way, people who were maybe a little shy or a little more quiet could have their voice heard right up front. It moved discussion along at times. And the committee relied heavily on even broader public input, though this was a wide-ranging committee from every ward in the city, all people who lived and work in the city. We conducted a survey at the beginning of the process that was community-wide and were able to get really strong response. 2,968 Beaumont citizens participated in this survey. I want to stop for just a moment to talk about that. It was an online survey. We run special technology and also do in-person reviews to make sure that robots and that sort of thing aren't participating in the surveys. We have ways to look at that. They are not fail-proof, but they're pretty darned good. And we did not see any evidence of that. We also try and screen out people who live outside the city or the region. And from what we could tell, it was, you know, Beaumont residents responding to this, a good, strong response. So just to give you a little comparison, in another survey done recently by the city of Beaumont, you had 585 participants over about three months. This was done in about a month, 2,900 participants. So the citizens were really anxious to give their input on this issue. And we, we reached out using targeted ads, using civic organizations and churches. Your department heads helped pass the word. Some of you, I am sure, did. Later on, as we moved forward, your citizen committee used their own social networks to pass that word. And your great public information department here also promoted this. So that teamwork together really got us a very strong response. It was available in Spanish and English and actually, I believe it's 131 other languages. It could be translated electronically. So people had a wide range of opportunities to participate. And it was handicap-friendly also. Tina? And what we found in that early survey, remember, this is really before the bond committee had started its work or just as it started its work. And we gave people a number of options and some open-ended questions as well. And what we heard from folks that was that infrastructure was really a number one priority. People could, could name really their first priority here. And infrastructure was number one. And then economic development or return on investment for the city of Beaumont was the second priority. And then you can see priorities that stepped down from there. Tina? We also asked whether you're currently inclined to support the bonds. And while a large majority said, yes, they were considerate, there was also some, some hesitancy, frankly. People who saying that they want to make sure that it didn't raise taxes or that they might, but they were unsure depending what was in the specific project. So that there was really a bare minimum saying, yes, let's go forward. But a lot of people saying, let's, let's hear what the process brings us. Next, Tina? And we asked how much you'd be willing to pay per month. And you, here again, you can see that it was kind of all over the board, but there was a, a majority of folks that said, yes, they are willing to pay money to see bonds move forward in Beaumont, even if that impacted their taxes. Tina? 51% saying they would be willing to pay $10 a month or more. And then another 13, 14% saying they would pay $5 or more. Next. So as the weeks went by and your committee developed some tentative priorities, then we went back to the committee with an open house. So the survey was in the spring. The open house was in the summer after the committee had done a lot of work and developed some initial recommendations. And again, we got very strong citizen participation. Almost 2,700 citizens participated. Most of them were in online open house where people were guided through a series of boards and information presentations and then asked questions, had the opportunity to give open-ended comments as well. That was open starting July 4th. And we got a lot of participation right from the get-go at your July 4th presentation. And it was open till celebrations, I should say. And it was open till July 14th. Next, Tina? We also had a live in-house on Saturday, the 12th, from 10:00 to 1:00 with about 76 citizens. with about 76 citizen attendees. And then a lot of your staff and some of the committee members and some of you council members were there as well. These were come-and-go presentations, both online and in person. You could spend as long as you wanted to reading information. There were references back and QR codes so people could go learn more and more if they, if they chose to. They were self-paced, they were interactive. But to answer the questions at the end, you had to show that you had been through some of the data. Next? This really, the data that we presented to your community showed the current state of city finance, trends for growth. Again, what bonds are, some of the information that had been presented to the committee itself on what tax implications might be, and then very specific potential projects. Next? And this was really, we wanted to learn what citizens thought in general, but also about a few specific items that were in that maybe category that I talked about before, where the bond advisory committee was unsure themselves and wanted more specific citizen feedback. For example, about golf course renovations. Next, about the police headquarters. And finally, about whether citizens felt the, the bond committee is on the right track. Next, Tina? So, we got some good feedback, again, from folks here. The golf course, a majority of your citizens said, yeah, we, we don't think the golf course rises to the level of being on, on this bond. There were a lot of people who were willing to be open to future alternatives, but not on this bond was a, was a pretty clear statement from the community, at least those participating in the survey. And then we also asked about the police headquarters, because there'd been a lot of debate about that on the committee. And I think the committee universally felt like Beaumont needed to do something to support the police department and to move in the direction of additional improvements out of the police department, but had taken a preliminary vote that, well, maybe we need to assess that, study it more, understand the finances behind that, come up with a clear plan and address the police department more, but not quite sure. So, let's see what the citizens have to say. We tried to lay that out with really four alternatives that you can see here on this slide. The first says we should do a facility assessment now and once we've determined better pricing, long-term needs, build a police headquarters either out of bond funds or a separate public safety fund. And a plurality of folks chose that. Again, now we're talking about the public, not just the bond committee. We had about 31% say they weren't for funding the police headquarters at all. And we had 27% said, go ahead and put it in this bond, even though we, we don't have a final plan yet and we don't have good budget numbers yet. The needs are so urgent that we should move forward. That was about 27%. And then about 6% said they needed more information. Next, Tina? Finally, we, or not finally, but we also asked, do you feel the BBAC is headed in the right direction? 54% said yes, 46% said no. I want to tell you a little bit more about that when we get to the next slide, because it's really clear that people who said yes and no had their own ideas of what that meant. Tina? So, we, to kind of tease that out more, we said, you know, how much would you be willing to pay for these projects? In our experience working around the state, it's one thing to say, yeah, I'm for a project. It's another when you ask people, will they really spend their hard-earned dollars on projects? So, we always like to include that question. And here you see support actually goes up. We had 60% say that they were willing to spend $10 or more. A significant proportion saying they were willing to spend a lot more. So, that is, I want to call out to you that that is, that is higher than before we started the process. So, as people in the community came to see the process and what was going on, you might interpret that they got more comfortable with it. As people in the community saw the specific projects that the bond advisory committee was talking about, support for a possible bond actually went up. So, from our perspective, always a good sign if you have a citizen committee out there trying to represent the public, if confidence in that process and in the outcomes grow. In addition, you saw 54% said, yeah, we think the committee is heading in the right. Only 54% said, we think the committee is heading in the right direction. But 60% said, we're willing to pay money for what the committee is doing. And I think that can be explained in a couple of ways, but primarily, there were some open-ended questions. Do you want to do the golf course? Do you want to do the police station? And people were all over the map on that. Some of them said, no, we don't want to do those things. So, they were a little skeptical about some of those issues. But when you look at it as a package, they seem to be more broadly supportive. And I think a fair inference is at least among the respondents that as this gets narrowed down, if this were to be narrowed down in response to their comments, that support might go even higher. Next? We also had open-ended comments. And so, this is intended just to give you a reflection of those comments. We'll be glad to forward all of the comments to you as you like. Here, I forget, but I believe it was about 90 people took the time to give open-ended comments. 180, not 80, okay. Good. So, infrastructure, we really got a lot of comments, both in person at the live open house and online of people saying they wanted to see even more emphasis on infrastructure. It's important to note, I know that you all are aware of this, but especially important to note for the community that the infrastructure that is recommended here by the committee and that the committee was talking about before the open house is not the only effort that Beaumont is making toward infrastructure. It's part of a network of improvements that you all have worked on. There are road projects in every neighborhood and every ward that get paid for out of the regular budget or out of COs. And there are $68 million of drainage projects that were being planned over the next five years as part of your community investment plan. Still, having explained some of that to residents, what we heard pretty loud and clear was, hey, we want even more emphasis in this bond on infrastructure. On police headquarters, we had, we, we got a lot of comments about people agreeing that they want to see support for the police department in Beaumont. We also had a lot of people saying they agree that upgrades are needed to address flooding or health risks, but quite a few comments saying, we're just not ready to move forward with spending the police, spending on the police department at this time until you can give us a plan and specific details about money. Downtown improvements, lots of folks saw value. What we really heard from people was, can it really work in Beaumont? That was the big question that we got from comments. And then on the golf course, as I noted earlier, you know, some very passionate supporters of the golf course, but a, but a majority of folks saying, hey, I like it, but it, it costs too much, serves too few to be included as the top priority to make this bond cut off. That leads me to, to the report here and the conclusions of the bond committee. A bond committee came back after this open house and first of all, made some changes in response to public sentiment. I think that's very important for the public to know that the bond committee was really interested in listening to what they had to say and made significant, concrete changes and amendments to their plan based on what they heard from citizens. You can see that particularly in drainage, also in police. So, the recommendation is that, yes, the city should consider placing a general bond package before voters in the November 2025 ballot. Again, the committee recommend, understands. I think that, that this is your final decision, but you asked them for a recommendation and the recommendation is yes. Bond package is warranted. Next, that the committee identified four distinct areas that merit this kind of investment and recommended that those be presented to voters as four independent propositions, that voters have the opportunity to, to pass or turn down each of those propositions. We'll talk more about those in a few minutes. And the final recommendation is for about $210 million in projects that are identified as the most urgent priorities across the city out of that more than 1.35 billion that we talked about in the beginning. So, the four propositions, you all may choose to group them differently, but the committee had a good bit of discussion about this. And this was their recommendations, at least as a starting place. Infrastructure, that would include drainage, roads and sidewalks. And they're recommending $94.6 million in projects. This lines up pretty well with the public sentiment that you heard both in the community survey at the beginning of the project and in the open house, where citizens said their number-one priority was infrastructure. Well, it's the largest part of the proposed bond package, 94.6 million. And that would include a sidewalk initiative, both to create a master plan for sidewalks and to kick off that plan with millions of dollars in investment in sidewalks throughout the city. It includes a major extension of Dowland Road, which both provides mobility and traffic relief, but also is, would be intended to provide spur some economic development and create tax base in the city. A Point Parkway North extension of 0.6 miles to connect to State Highway 105. And then we talked about drainage improvements. These weren't included in the original bond because committee members had a lot of discussion about your, your broader efforts and that those might be paid for elsewhere. But after here, after a lot of discussion among themselves, first of all, and some questions among themselves where that should be higher priority, then hearing from the open house that citizens thought it should be higher priority. Working with your committee, we asked your staff to go back and look at some potential projects. They identified a number of projects that they thought would be very useful, timely. And we presented those back to the committee and the committee recommends $28 million in drainage projects. I'll, I'll pause just for a moment to mention something that's important for the community to understand and to reiterate with you all, even though you've been exposed to it. Projects that are, if you decide to put these projects on a general bond proposal for the voters to pass or, or at least pass judgment on, any specific projects that fail cannot be funded through debt, through some other debt instrument by the city for three years. So, you could not use a CO to fund those. So, one of the things that I know that your staff looked at carefully and that the, the committee took into account is trying to get projects that would make a real difference, but that also would be specific enough and limited enough that you could move forward with other drainage projects if they did not pass. Next slide? Facilities in public safety, $19.5 million. And that includes animal care, services and adoption center. It includes fire station number four, replacing that fire station. This facilities assessment to look at facilities across the board in Beaumont, the police headquarters being a main focus, but also looking at all of your building needs here in Beaumont and trying to decide, well, what is highest priority? Where can space be combined or repurposed? Where do you need new buildings? Where can you get by with just improvements? Looking 20 years into the future, programming, how many employees do you expect to have? What kind of needs will those be? So, it can be a very useful study. We've participated, we don't do those, so I'm not trying to sell them, but we've participated in those in a lot of other cities. They can give you a lot of really good information. Had a lot of discussion about that in the committee. And I think the committee came to feel that was important. Then downtown cameras, whether they be downtown or somewhere in the city to increase security as you make other investments in downtown. And then finally, police maintenance improvements. This was a new item that came out of the open house. Leading up to the open house, the committee had had a lot of discussion about, well, the police headquarters, but does that really get us new people on the street? The chief had explained that, you know, it would help morale and they had some flooding problems. The committee ultimately decided they weren't ready to recommend the police headquarters until after the facilities assessment was done to give you a better idea of long-term need, a better idea of costs and to put that into perspective. But they also thought there needed to be some money immediately to help the police department overcome some of its challenges related to flooding, related to antiquated buildings and HVA systems. So, they, they included about $3.4 million that were identified by your Director of Facilities, Kenny Smith, that would, that could go towards making immediate impact in the, in the, in the police department's several buildings. Parks, Trails and Recreation, $46.9 million. So, this included playground equipment, replacing aging equipment and new equipment across nine city park locations, renovation of park and restroom facilities across your system. It includes major improvements at Terrell Park and upgrades. That's the largest single-ticket item on here. Your park study this spring identified a number of improvements to the, to Terrell Park. We had people like the, the folks at the Botanical Gardens who came forward with other recommendations that I think the city is going to find ways to incorporate. The Riverfront Park Extension that I know you all have been talking about was put into Parks, Trails and Recs projects. And then an athletic complex, number four, converting and making general enhancement improvements to fields there that would create opportunity to host events year-round and perhaps generate some, some income and some tourism here in the city as well as providing facilities for local youth. Next, Tina? Then finally, downtown economic development at just under $50 million. Again, you recall that from the initial citizen survey that economic development, creating a return on investment was a priority number two for citizens. And it in fact comes in as the second highest total in the bond proposition. That's the creation of a sports facility designed to be a regional facility that would bring people into Beaumont for a variety of sporting events and tournaments. Tina? So, that is the, the recommendations in a nutshell from your citizen committee. I just want to say again that your, your staff gave up a lot of nights and extra time to be there at these meetings and worked really hard to get us information. We, we asked for it, we really appreciate that. Your citizens committee did an admirable job and I think really felt a sense of ownership in the process. We were, we were proud to be a part of it. And I'm, Mr. Mayor, I'm glad to answer questions.
Well, and I just want to congratulate you on that whole process and our whole advisory committee for all the time they invested. And I, I got to be at two of them, I got to watch them later. But it was, it was well-done and, and everybody participated a lot and certainly, I think, got educated through the process. So, I really commend you. It was an education for me as well, as I went through it. Any comments? All right, Councilman Turner?
Jeff, with your experience, can you kind of explain, you know, breaking things down, itemized versus, you know, grouping? Can you explain to the public why it's important to look at some of the proposed propositions as they're kind of what proposed today?
Sure, Councilmember. You know, state law prohibits you from just having a single proposition, right? So that you, and the idea used to be able to do that, but the idea is you don't want a city to, to put the dogs that nobody wants in with, you know, some special project just to pass everything. So, you, you, you have to group like-minded issues together. And you could have condensed this to just maybe two propositions, perhaps. There was some initial discussion on the committee, the very first or second meeting about, well, maybe we would want to present, you know, 30 propositions. And I think that's what you may be alluding to. Some citizens wondered that, well, why don't you give us a chance to vote on everything? From a practical standpoint, that's just not very useful. Most people don't walk into a booth able to understand 30 or 40 propositions. There's real voter fatigue. It's very hard to explain to citizens what's going on if you're trying to deal with that many propositions. In addition, In addition, you want a little bit of flexibility as a city so that if you have several road projects, for instance, and one of them comes in under budget and one of them comes in slightly over budget, you can move that money between road propositions. Now, it's really important to make this point that the city can't just take bond money and, and, you know, go build a Taj Mahal for yourselves here at City Hall. You can only spend the money on what's been called out in the bonds. But it is useful in that, in, within propositions to have a little flexibility to move between projects or to do something related to it if you need to. And combined with that, that kind of sense of trying to explain to voters and the fact that some of these individual projects are reliant upon other projects within that same proposition, if you're working on drainage or if you're working on facilities, you know, it's nice to have that facility study get done. It's nice to have that drainage that may complement other pieces of drainage. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. And my follow-up is, I think is extremely important for our community to understand in this process, right now, infrastructure is a top priority and we hear it throughout the community. But understand if some of these projects are not passed, and you, you said it, but I want to emphasize it, if things are not passed for three years, if I wasn't, if I didn't mishear, mishear what you said, for three years, we won't be able to address those projects, not even through another fund of revenue like a CO bond.
You cannot call an emergency bond a CO bond, or that, or that sometimes they're used for routine items, but those sorts of bonds that go around voter, that, that can be issued without voter approval. And you cannot call another bond election on the same project for, for three years.
And my last question is, first of all, I appreciate the transparency in the process. You know, city manager staff, it started back almost in 2021 when we started talking about vision with prior administration, but it kind of evolved into this. And even with the new council members, I appreciate you guys because it's our job to make better what's already existing. So just to be able to come on board and to kind of see what was already formulated and see how we can make it better, that's important. But you also stated that it's still a possibility that in the future, because we're still listening to citizens, we don't have that much time, but if things want to be edited, it's still a possibility.
That, that's right, council member. You have, I believe, until August 18th to call a final vote. You, you, you have to call the vote early enough to get it on the ballot and get the ballots printed, and that deadline is August 18th. Until then, it's up to the city council to make a final determination. You now have the recommendation from your citizen advisory board, but as you say, the final decision is yours and none of this is set in stone. You're able to tweak these recommendations if you choose to.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Sherwood.
I just wanted to further talk about the phases. We're not at a place, if you could talk about the phases, so where we are now, there's another phase and we, we ultimately get to have some input, and there's still time for citizen input before we go to the ballot. I just kind of, if you could break down the phases a little bit more.
Councilmember, I'd be glad to, you know, again, just to, just to kind of put a bow on it and pull all of that together. This started with your staff, as you said, council member, going back years, putting together projects. Many of those projects were based on citizen input. The parks plan is just a recent example. Then you all chose us to go out and talk more to the public. So we went through the survey with what I believe is record public involvement in the city of Beaumont. And then the citizen-driven advisory board, the open house to check their work. They revised it based on that, and we bring you this recommendation. But there is still time, as you note, council member, for citizens to weigh in and let you all know what they think of this final product and for you all to accept it as is or to tweak it and to put it on the ballot for this November. In addition, it's worth noting that your committee had a lot of discussion about the, the possibility of a future bond. For example, there were some projects that the committee really thought worthwhile that just needed to ripen a little bit or maybe needed additional information. I, I, I think, in fact, I told the committee that I would bring this up with you. The police headquarters is an example of that, whether you choose to do something for the police headquarters now or later. I think from the committee's perspective, it was, yes, we think there probably needs to be some additional capital improvements in police. It just might be on a future bond that was dedicated to public safety. So there is not only time to give input now on this fall's bond proposition, but to influence the process in other ways, looking at maybe how, what you fund out of your regular budget or in some future bond or future investment strategy. I hope that, council member, did that address your concerns?
Councilmember Crenshaw, then councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jeff, you and your team did an outstanding job.
Thank you very much.
I think I was able to attend all of about two of the meetings and I was very impressed, very professional, and I think y'all did a great job of trying to reach out to the community. I wish the survey would have had higher numbers, as I'm sure you all do, but it is what it is. And you're, in the very last meeting, I believe that you made some suggestions to the committee that there could be different categories on, on what would go on the ballot. And I think you also kind of tweaked the words a little bit to kind of make voters maybe buy into something and be more palpable for voters if, if it was called something different. And so one of the things, the items that you proposed is, or the committee's proposed is a downtown economic development project, which is this sports complex.
Right.
And you would agree with me that if some members of the council had a hard time trying to convince voters or want voters to understand that you are actually going to create economic development by just building a facility, but in reality, that could be an investment in our local youth and a, a building that you want to see happen for local youth, that it would be just as appropriate to put that under facilities and public safety.
Good point, council member. I'm glad you brought it up. The, the committee did recommend these four propositions, but there was a lot of discussion about that. I think the committee, we certainly understand, and I think the committee felt also that those, some of those lines are porous. And what I mean by that is some of those, you know, a park, some park programs could be called a facility. The sports complex is a great example of that because it is a sports complex, so do you call it really a parks and rec facility? Do you call it on the ballot, a sports complex? Well, it's really intended to draw some regional economic development, so that's how it's labeled. But I think the committee fully recognized that those are subtle questions that maybe the council might want to wrestle with themselves. And, you know, we're, we're, we're glad to help with that, but all of those propositions are really an org, a way to organize this so that like-minded things can be grouped together. You've got quite a bit of flexibility there, and I think your, your attorney and your bond counsel can help you with that. We're glad to as well.
And in cities where you've seen these bond proposals be successful and pass, I think y'all actually have a great track record, correct?
We, 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 we have a good track record. We do, in fact.
And you've seen it with just the three proposals, right? Parks and rec, facilities and infrastructure.
We've worked on a wide variety of projects, and so people group these in different ways. I think there was, there was some concern back and forth, as you saw that night with the committee, like, well, you could easily put the sports complex, assuming that you want to go forward with it, you could easily put the sports complex under, you know, theoretically under facilities or under parks. There were some people in the committee that felt like, well, we don't want to seem like we're trying to hide the ball, that this is this downtown economic development issue because it was talked about that way originally. So I think, you, to answer your question directly, yes, you, we've seen, we've seen kind of all permutations of this where people have, you know, two or three propositions that are more inclusive, four or five. We don't see people go above that ver, you know, you get above four or five, you get vote, you get voter fatigue and just citizen fatigue trying to understand all the different issues.
Understood. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Williams.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I want to, I guess it's a kind of a two-part question, but I'm going to read from one of the slides where it says, "Study to evaluate all city buildings, including police departments, seven locations, to identify long-term needs." And then at the top where it says, "Replace the current undersized and outdated animal care center." So I'm just curious, like, what did y'all determine that, like, with the animal care center that that was, how do, how do we know what is outdated and undersized and we need a new one? And I, I'm not, I mean, I'm not lobbying for it, but I'm just, in terms of the police station, I'm going, well, it's outdated, undersized, so I'm going, what led to determine this here and this here? What led to that study being done, I guess?
Let me, let me start kind of early in the process and kind of, and walk you through how that language developed and how those decisions developed. So as I said, we went through your, your different studies and your community investment plan that's already been done really by your staff. Some of that's been voted on prior councils, has been prioritized in that way. We took all those projects and presented them to the committee. Now, some of those we peeled off because they could be funded other ways. A lot of projects in your, in your water utility, for example, can be funded through user fees, just as one example. And then that left us still a pretty big group of four to $500 million were the projects to, to consider. Then we asked your department heads to come make presentations about things that had already been identified as top priorities. So in each of those cases, different department heads came to speak to the police station, your, your facilities head spoke to both the animal control and to the police station. In addition, the chief and the assistant chief spoke to the police station. Out of that, we developed some consensus around the committee about kinds of wording or kinds of issues that they wanted to explore, which they were ready to move forward on. And animal control, frankly, pretty quickly after those presentations, animal control moved into the yes category, and the police station stayed in the maybe category with, I think, lots of recognition that there were problems there, but not consensus on what to do about those or how quickly. That brought up this discussion of a facilities assessment that I think your department head had been interested in for quite some time, that maybe your city administration recommended that we've seen be successful elsewhere. So frankly, we recommended that maybe that should be thrown into the mix to, to help get a handle on potential budget. One of the issues with the police station was that early on, the, the, the talk was that maybe $50 million would cover the needs there, but nobody had firm numbers. That came from a consultant and one consultant informally. At the next meeting, that grew to 70 or 80, then to maybe that would be 100 to 110 to really get to what the police sta, the police department needs over the long term. And I think you had some committee members say, well, without those numbers being nailed down, we, we agree that they're, that the police station is outdated and needs improvements, but maybe we need to understand what those are, think about, you know, crime victim rooms, police officer sizing over the next five, 10, 15 years, where it's going to be locations, real estate pricing before putting that on to voters. Now, the alternative is, well, you just set a number and build to that number, right? So it's not impossible to do without those good numbers, but most of the other items in the package had tighter numbers. Then because the committee really struggled with this issue, they asked us to put that on the open house questions and really just state frankly to people that, hey, the committee's still struggling with this issue, doesn't have a final recommendation, where do you come in on it? We tried to give quite a bit of information about, as well, some photographs about the conditions of the current police station, the fact that it was built when the department was much smaller and so that there's a serious problem with office space, some problems with, you know, supplies and record storage, and then put those questions to the public. I hope that gets to your question.
Yeah, but I mean, logistically, a, a study to evaluate all city buildings would have been a useful tool prior to, to your facilitation study, I guess. I mean, it just feels like we're backwards with it, like.
Pardon me, I'm, the, the facilitation study and the, maybe, maybe.
Before the, the convening of the committee, I guess.
Well, I think you, you can look at that, I think, as half-full or half-empty. You know, I think you, you have a lot of really strong numbers that have been prepared by your department heads, in some cases, in some cases by outside consultants on many of these issues, but you don't have them yet on the police station. Your police department has done some good work talking to consultants to get an idea.
And I'm not specific, I mean, it said all city facilities. I mean, I'm not specific to the police station on that. I mean, I know that was listed in there, but it said a study for all city facilities.
Yes, sir. I think that was, that's the recommendation to the committee, and I, I, my apologies, I feel like I'm being dense, but I'm, I'm not quite following your question. Is it without have been useful beforehand?
Yeah.
Well, sure. I think, sure, it would have been useful, certainly not necessary. I think we, we see that done all different kinds of ways in different cities. I think as you begin to plan long-term, you already have some projects that you know you need, some projects are well penciled, others aren't. And so the idea here is, hey, we, we have some projects that we have identified as priorities, we have some projects that we know the cost of, we have other projects that we don't know the cost of, and before we want to move forward them, not just costs, but as you, I think, mentioned, need, you know, let, let's, let's get a fuller assessment done. And so I guess in that sense, you could say you could wait on the animal care facility or a fire station number four, but I think the committee felt like they had enough information about those two projects to feel comfortable moving forward. I hope that answers your question.
No, thank you.
And we've got another question, I know, but I wanted to let people know that August 5th, we do have another meeting at 1:30 because it's the first Tuesday, but we will have a special meeting August 12th, which is the following Tuesday, which wouldn't normally happen for this, to, to review the bond advisory and make a, make a recommendation or pass a resolution at that point. So just to be, just to be mindful of that. Councilmember Durio.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. I want to just be specific for our people that are watching. So the only thing that's going to be on the ballot are the four propositions, not each individual project.
That's correct, council member. Now, to go back to Mr. Crenshaw's comments, you could choose to change that or for it to only be three propositions, but however many propositions you choose, that's what will be on the ballot. And we would strongly recommend against putting every individual item on the ballot. And I, there are a lot of reasons for that, but we have not seen that be successful in other cities. It, it confuses people, it creates kind of an information crisis as people try and figure out which propositions, which some propositions are in related. So I think you, three or four propositions, whatever it is, that's what people will be voting for, so they'll have to make some decisions about whether, as a whole, they can feel comfortable with those propositions.
And they'll be listed like they were in your presentation, like it'll, it'll be parks and trails.
Councilmember Durio, before you ask your next question, so the bond advisory committee gave a recommendation similar to the, the charter committee on the August 12th meeting, council will decide how those items are listed and categorized and how you would like them packaged on the ballot. So that's not really for the committee to do. They provided their recommendation, that's what they're recommending, that they look like and how they be presented on the ballot, but ultimately, council makes the final decision on how the items are presented and packaged on the ballot, up and into and including language for the ballot. So that's not really for the committee to do, is, that's just their recommendation. And I'm just going to reference the charter since that's the last kind of election that the city called where the council had to kind of decide on ballot language and proposition. So you can decide to, as Councilman Crenshaw said, kind of merge some of those items or re, re-figure the language, but it's ultimately your decision on how a, a bond item is packaged.
Okay. And one other question, kind of referring to what Councilman Williams was stating, our facilities maintenance, facilities manager, was his department able to help as far as deciding what facilities we might want to look at repairing? what facilities we might want to look at repairing or what would most, most needed repair?
Yes, sir. He did some great work in giving us information to use and also presented directly to the committee with information, budgets, photographs of, of different facilities. And I believe, I know he's in the audience, and I, I hate to speak for him, so he can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think the, the city had also identified some preliminary priorities. So he gave them an overview of all the facilities and potential needs and also of what might be some priorities, and the, the, the committee took it from there.
I'll just step up just to speak, so, please not speaking for me. So yes, we, we have made the recommendations. And we've been speaking on the facilities condition assessment, facilities master plan. Yes, it's something that could be, have, you know, been created beforehand, but it wasn't. You know, we don't have a facility master plan, facility condition assessment, but it's gonna be a great tool in understanding what our facilities are, what our needs assessment are going in the future. You know, I know you mentioned animal shelter. We build new animal shelter, what about the old building? What are we gonna do with that? You know, so those are things that get assessed during facility condition assessment. We build a new facility, what's gonna happen to the old one? You know, are we gonna sell it? Is it gonna become another facility or are we gonna use it for another purpose? So do a conditions assessment, we get information on what these facilities can be used for. Is it gonna become a museum or something like that? So it's, it's definitely a necessary tool. And all the recommendations that were made to GAAP was something that we came up with. Obviously, some of these buildings have been in the CIP for a couple of years, like the animal shelter, police headquarters, this future years out. So these facilities have been identified previously already for, you know, for building in the future. So a facility condition assessment would just assist in trying to understand our buildings and really preparing for the future and then some of the, some of the present needs.
Okay. Thank you. And I just have one more question, this might be for you, city attorney. After the, after August the 18th, can anything be changed?
No. So that is a, a solid firm deadline to get things on the ballot. As a matter of fact, that's the last day, which is why we opted to do August 12th, so that there was some, some modifications, we had that cushioned, that is the last day.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And councilmember, if I could, just to go back to your question that Ms. Reed answered so well about, you know, final ballot language, it, it is important to let people know that the, the city, I think, does plan to put out additional supplemental information that in talking to your city staff, that if you go forward, there'll be, there could be, if you choose to, put out lots of information, not trying to sway the public, but just to educate the public on what the options are, what it means if they vote yes or no, what the tax rate might be along the way. And I, I should have mentioned that, you know, the, I think it was in one of the slides that I jumped over it quickly. You had a lot of support for that $10 to $15 range of tax impact on the average-priced property in Beaumont, which is about $150,000. So the caveat is if your own personal property is less, you would pay less, if it's more, you would pay more. Businesses pay it as well as homeowners. And then the committee's work comes in at just over $11, $11.20 something cents, roughly according to your outside financial advisor. So kind of on the low end of that target range that voters said they felt comfortable with.
Thank you.
All right, I've got Councilmember Hilliard next.
Yeah. Well, first off, I would like to thank the staff and the, the men and women that took part in doing this, giving their time. A lot of these people have jobs and, and a lot of other things going on. So I would, I would like to, to give them kudos for, for taking the time and speaking for, I believe, the, the people of Beaumont. We were well represented. And, you know, one of the things that I see on here is the $550,000 for billing assessment. We have a, a great group, Kenneth and his group at Facilities. They know our buildings, they know what needs to be done. And so, you know, that's one of the things I have a problem with is why not rely on, on our staff? And we have a great staff in, in doing the type of facility assessment. And to speak on the animal center, if you've never taken a tour of it, I would, you would realize how badly that needs to be improved and, and the condition that, that they're, they're making work. And so I just, I, not really any questions, but I just wanted to make sure that, that I, and I believe I speak for the council, that, that we thank these men and women for taking the time and representing Beaumont and looking forward to our future, so.
They really were great to work with, councilmember. They did their homework, they came prepared, they worked hard, you, you should be proud of them. And I, I, I'll just offer, I know it wasn't a question, I will say, just, just our experience, and you, you, you can do it any way you wish, and, you know, you're local, we're not. But those facilities assessments that we've worked with in other cities have, have been worth what you pay for them. You, you might get that cheaper, that sounds like a lot of money when you say, well, we're gonna do a study, another study for a lot of money. But really, what you're doing is, I think you, you have dozens and dozens of city properties. So trying to assess those different properties and not just look at how they meet, how they are used now, but how they can be used in the future, and then put hard costs to what that might mean and what the savings might mean. So you're bringing in, you know, construction experts, maybe architects, who give you some kinds of sketches. All I want to point out, because this, this came up in the committee, so I want to try and represent their work, is that that sounds at first glance to, to, to some folks as like kind of a crazy number, but it gets spread out across many, many different buildings, and it has often saved cities a lot of money.
I just know that Kenneth and his staff are the ones that are keeping all these buildings going.
They do a great job.
They do a phenomenal job with what they have to work with, and, and they know what we need. And so that would be my, just, it's just my thought, because I, I had a chance to meet with them and see the amazing work that they do and, and what they do to keep these buildings going, and so.
Yes, sir.
And Councilmember Turner, you had one more thing?
Just, just Madam Attorney, can you just explain to the public, once it's on the ballot, our council members will not have the opportunity to kind of advocate. We're, we're kind of in that lane of only we can explain.
Left two. So state law prohibits the use of city resources from advocating for or against a proposition on the ballot. So staff and any employee of the city, and I would caution elected officials as well, not to advocate. As, as been mentioned, Mr. Barton says you can educate, and there's a very thin line between providing explanation and avocation, but it is against the law for anyone connected to the city to use city resources to advocate for a proposition.
Can I? Councilmember Crenshaw.
And that means using city resources to advocate? That does not mean that they can go out in the community and have conversations with people off city property without city resources, saying what they think about certain bond proposals, correct?
Who are you referring to exactly?
Councilmembers.
So council is free to do as they please, obviously.
Wonderful, thank you.
And councilmember, I, listen, your attorney is the expert here, but just, I have seen councilmembers, sometimes when they phrase it artfully to say, well, the reason I voted to put this on the bond package was because of these issues, and that, that helps explain your position without necessarily advocating a vote one way or another. I think council, I have seen, council is free to do that, but it gets this gray line, as Ms. Reed has said, with city resources.
The penalty is personal, so council is always free to use their best judgment to do what they feel is in their best interest.
So are councilmembers considered to be city resources?
You know, that's always been up for debate and discussion. So a resource, you know, is just, general staff for sure is a city resource just because we're available to have different information. Molly's always gonna be the public works director when she's out in public. Mr. Williams will always be the city, uh, city manager, so we have information that the general public does not. One would argue that council also shares that same privilege and that they have additional information that the general public does not, but it's, it's open for interpretation, so.
And I'd like to add that we're a self-governing body, so we will be governing ourselves accordingly and/or, I guess, we'll check each other.
All right, yes.
I, I'd just add, like that, just a little bit about the facilities assessment. You know, we started this process, I think the number was 1.35 billion. And so that included a lot of other city facilities. It wasn't just the one that's, this 210 million, we're talking about 1.35 billion. So that's to take a look at, at all city's facilities, you know. When we started out, a new city hall was on that proposition, you know, and all these other busy libraries. So it gives us an opportunity to look at all of our facilities and figure out the best use for them. You know, if you build a new police station, what happens to the old building? We, we've got to look at that, we could use that for something else, we could use for city, uh, community development, who knows? But it gives you a, a good snapshot of everything, and it plans well into the future because you can build a new building and then two years it's full again. So you want to plan for something that's gonna last for about 30 years, and that assessment gives you a big picture, long down the road, look at, at that. You know, Ken, they do great work, but they've got to know what to do sometimes and what we need to do. But, so that gives a good look at a big picture of the city and all the facilities, including the parks and et cetera.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Mr. Barton, thank you so much. Ms. Buffington, y'all did a great job, and did you have?
Well, Mayor, I was just gonna say, as you're talking about long range, something I regret that I should have emphasized earlier is that these numbers do take into account inflation. So as you get asked questions by your constituents, that's something we often hear, your department heads figured in inflation, we added some extra money in there for inflation and for contingency. So I would like people to know that there was some work done by your staff, by us, by your committee to try and look forward into costs, not just what they are today, but what they might be in year two or year three as these projects get built.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very thorough.
Appreciate it very much.
Yes, sir. And now we have a presentation by TechStot, and we have Mr. Martin Gonzalez, who is the district engineer for TechStot, which is over this entire area. And I see you brought a good bit of the staff with you too, so appreciate y'all being here, appreciate the update.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. It's gonna be hard to follow that, all those graphs and charts, I don't have any of that. So, but as you can see from our bright colored shirts, I brought my whole entourage with me here, so I don't travel light whenever I travel, I'm just kidding. But it's a lot of my staff, my, my key staff members that wanted to have the opportunity to come and introduce myself, since there's a lot of new councilmembers. And also, you know, obviously, be able to, to provide information on who to contact on, on some of our particular areas of responsibility. So I'm gonna take that opportunity to, this evening, to, to show some of the information of what TechStot Beaumont District is. And, oh, not yet, sorry. Yeah, no, it's okay. I, I'm, I'm sorry, I used my hand, I know he was signaling, I'll just say next slide, but, but yes. As you mentioned, Mayor, I'm Martin Gonzalez. I, I have the honor of serving as the district engineer for the Beaumont District. I've been with TechStot for 24 years, and I've had the honor of being here in, in the Beaumont District for the last five years. So I've, I've served in a few capacities as a director of maintenance, then deputy district engineer, and then I was selected to be the district engineer, the role that I've had now for about going on four years. So, next slide, please. Like with any presentation that we do, you know, here at TechStot, we think safety is very important. That's one of the reasons why you see the safety shirts. We want to make sure that we promote safety everywhere we go. While TechStot is, is shifting our focus as far as our campaigns, we, you've probably seen some of our "Drive Like a Texan" campaign. I still wanted to have this slide up to help us end the streak because since November 7th, 2000, it was the last deathless day on Texas highways. So on average, we have about 10 fatalities a day in the state of Texas. It's a big state, we understand that, but, but we have yet to have a single day without a fatality on our roadways. So we need everybody to help us with that. There's the four top contributing factors that we have. You know, people are driving distracted, they're driving under the influence, they're not wearing a seatbelt, and they're speeding. So we need everybody's help to educate folks to, to continue sending the message so that we can hopefully get to, to hopefully a deathless day on our highways, and then also reduce the amount of fatalities that we have on our system. So, thank you, next slide. Okay, so our mission at TechStot is connecting you with Texas. There's, you know, the opportunities for growth here in the state are tremendous. We've seen a lot of people moving into the, to the state, there's a lot of growth statewide, and not only statewide, but here, we are, we're blessed to have so much growth and development, just, not just here in the Beaumont area, but we're seeing that in the eight counties that make up the Beaumont District. Our values, people, the department's most important customer, asset and resource. You know, we rely on not only our interactions with the public, but also our own staff. You know, we recognize that we can't do things without the people, right? Accountability, we, we accept responsibility for our actions and promote open communication and transparency at all times. Trust, we strive to earn and maintain confidence through reliable ethical decision-making. And honesty, we conduct ourselves with the highest degree of integrity, respect and truthfulness. That's our values. Next slide, please. So this is a snapshot of the Beaumont District. We have eight counties, as I mentioned before, so obviously we have Jefferson County, Chambers, Liberty, Harden, Orange, Tyler, Jasper and Newton. Next slide, please. Here's a little bit of statistics for the Beaumont District. You know, again, in the state of Texas, we have 254 counties, right? Lot of residents, we have an organization of over 13,000 employees, and each, we have 25 districts, and those 25 districts range in, in size, anywhere from six counties to 14 counties, depending on the, on the amount of vehicles and things like that, lane miles. Here of interest, I'd like to share with you the lane miles that we have in the Beaumont District. We have 6,004 lane miles, and we have a population of over 600,000 people. Next slide, please. Here's a snapshot of our organizational chart. As I mentioned at the beginning, I am, I serve as the district engineer, and I will be introducing some of my staff, well, all of my staff that's here with me here shortly. But as the district engineer, I have my deputy district engineer, Anna Mihares, is with me now. Sadly, Anna is gonna be retiring at the end of August after 27 years with TechStot, right? I got it right, 27 years. So, so very sad to see her go, but, but then also we have, Sarah DePrae serves as our management analyst, and some of you may know Sarah, she used to be our public information officer, and now serves as a management analyst in that role primarily handling a lot of our government relations and things like that with all our elected officials. Our public information officer is Tanya Avila. She was not able to be here tonight because she's in training in Austin. So, but, but she does a lot of good work for us. Obviously, you get to see a lot of the, the, the updates and things like that that she does on our projects. So as you go down, you can see our transportation planning and development. Our director is Lisa Collins, and she oversees design, planning and the bridge area. Construction, our director of construction is Kenneth Weimers. Now, I'll go a little bit more in-depth here shortly as to what each of them oversee. Our director of transportation operations is Farhan Khan, and our director of maintenance is Keith Horn. Now drilling down, obviously you see that we have three area engineers. I have three area offices in the eight counties that, that we have here in the Beaumont District. But of interest to you all, of course, is the Beaumont area office, which Beaumont area office, our area engineer is Dave Collins. And under Dave, he has four maintenance sections. So he serves three counties, which, again, I'll share more later, but he has four maintenance sections, Woodville, Coons, Port Arthur, and of course Beaumont Maintenance, which that is Fred Miller, who is seated back there as well. Next slide, please. So just a little bit of information on each of us. District engineer, me, Martin Gonzalez, I oversee all district functions. Everything that happens in this district, construction, maintenance, operations, government affairs, everything falls under me for the eight counties that, that make up our district. Next slide, please. Again, as I mentioned before, so if you would, don't mind standing, yeah, thank you. So my deputy district. So my deputy district engineer, Anna Mihares, she oversees all the district functions in the absence of of me not being in the in the city or in the state. She makes sure that all of the engineering activities are are taken care of. She handles this, our safety program. And she just does really a lot of good stuff. I just definitely gonna miss a lot of the work that she does for us. Thank you, Anna. Next. So our director TPND, Lisa Collins. So this is just a small uh picture of what she does. She does all kinds of things. Lisa, in her role as director TPND, is primarily responsible for her and her staff. They make sure that they produce the plans uh to make sure that we go to letting, to construction. They that she oversees all the right away, the utility relocations, all the environmental clearances. Everything that we do goes through Lisa and her office and her staff. So uh Lisa does a lot of the heavy lifting for our district. Very proud of Lisa and the work that she has done in the little bit over two years, right? Two and a half years in this role. Uh she's doing an amazing job, so thank you, Lisa. Next. Our director of transportation operations, Farhan Khan. So Farhan is over signs, striping, illumination, uh signals. It's safety projects that we have in the area. We have what is known as the HSIP, the Highway Safety Improvement Program, which that provides opportunities for us to just uh improve on our our safety of the roadways, right? So when you see some of these chevrons that have LEDs on them or some of the stop signs that have the LEDs uh lights on them, things like that. Farhan and his staff, they they look at these things to try to help improve our system uh throughout the eight counties that make up the district. Thank you, Farhan. Oh, okay. All right, thank you. Yeah, good, thank you. So director of construction, Kenneth Weimers. Kenneth is responsible for all of our construction projects uh within the Beaumont District. While we have area engineers and the area engineers oversee the the day to day operations, Kenneth oversees the, as as they start having any kind of complications, any any challenges with some of these construction projects. And we have some, well, we know we never have issues with contractors, right? Everybody has great experience with contractors. But in the event that we have some some opportunities for improvement, Kenneth takes care of those conversations, helps us with uh with making sure that he's interpreting all the uh our specifications uh to make sure that our contracts stay uh within what is intended uh as we set on our on our lettings. So Kenneth and his staff are responsible for our on time and on budget metrics and uh to make sure that our material testing is done on all of our projects as well. So thank you, Kenneth. I was gonna say, I already said Farhan, so we're good. So director of maintenance, Keith Horn. So Keith, uh he is one of our longest tenured employees, uh thirty three years? Thirty four, see, I shorted him one. So thirty three years with the department, has a lot of experience in maintenance. Very, very proud of the work that Keith does for us in our district. One of the roles for for Keith is to make sure that our pavement conditions throughout the eight counties that make up the Beaumont District are are in in good condition, which I know when you're driving through I ten and sixty nine, it does not feel like it is. I see you, Councilman Turner. But uh but the thing is, is obviously understanding that we are under construction. So that's uh I can't can't blame Keith on that one. But uh but we are very proud of our overall pavement scores for the di- for the district, for the eight counties that make up the district. We're evaluated um on on our performance overall. And uh every year, for the last five years, we've we've had an increase in our scores progressively. So Keith is responsible for all the maintenance sections, making sure that they stay within their budgets, making sure that we spend the money where it needs to be spent on maintenance projects. As we get some of these reports of um, you know, potholes or some failures that we have that we need to address with our maintenance forces, Keith coordinates all that with uh with our different ma- maintenance sections and our special jobs crew. And he makes sure that we have the funds available to be able to do those things and take care of them. And he also oversees our our emergency maintenance contracts. As we see and we have seen before uh through through some um inclement weather events. We we had, for example, lost the uh road on FM seven eighty seven, right? When we had uh the Trinity River rose. So Keith was responsible and instrumental along with uh with Lisa to to make sure that we had a set of plans put together so that we can get a contractor out there and and put that bridge back in place. So thank you, Keith. So up next, I have uh our Beaumont area engineer, Dave Collins. So Dave is responsible for, like I mentioned, uh three counties, Tyler, Harden and Jefferson Counties. And Dave oversees all the the construction and and the maintenance in those three counties within within his purview. If you notice, uh Dave has twenty six active construction projects at about one point four billion dollars and he has two thousand two hundred and twenty six lane miles within the three counties that he oversees. So Dave is very busy. I am very amazed that Dave does not have more gray hairs because uh he's always on the phone, he's always putting out fires. So but Dave, uh he is your local point of contact with our construction projects. If you have any issues with things like that, if you have questions in general, please feel free to reach out to Dave uh and he'll be able to to either help you or uh direct you to like, put you in contact with his staff. And you can see his cell phone number right there, four oh nine, seven nine oh, seven zero three one. So please have that. He's got, he's got business cards with him too, so uh so make sure we share that with you. Um then next slide, please. Okay, so our maintenance section, as I mentioned earlier, we have nine maintenance sections, right? We have two, two maintenance sections in Jefferson County. The Beaumont Maintenance Office is Fred Miller, is our maintenance supervisor. And I am gonna also direct you to his number, uh four oh nine, two oh one, seventeen eighty five, right? So Fred and and his staff, they have all the, like, if we have issues with potholing, if we have issues with with some uh, you know, some problems with our pavement, whereas a maintenance concern, right? Within our system, encourage you to please reach out to to Fred or Dave and they'll be able to to mobilize some folks so that we can assess what the what the situation is. And it's like I tell anybody, um you know, we rely a lot on on information and communication from the general public. You know, I know a lot of times y'all get phone calls and and I wish that the people didn't necessarily have to call you all, but they call and you're like, it's TechStot, it's not our road, you know? So so please feel free to direct them to us, uh give us the opportunity to to help address their concerns. But Fred and his staff are are ready to to go and help with a lot of these uh maintenance issues. And um, yeah, thank you, Fred. Next slide, please. So now I'm gonna give you a few uh updates on some of the projects that we have in our area. The I ten US sixty nine interchange, so this project is widening. Uh as you see, Cardinal and East Texas, those are two separate projects. We're widening from four lanes to six lanes. We're gonna be doing a lot of frontage road improvements. We're gonna be doing some sidewalk addition in in some of these locations throughout this project. We're gonna be doing some connectors. There's a lot of improvements that are being done for this project and that's gonna be obviously with with the growth that we have in this area. This is gonna be a very good, good project once we're completed, right? But uh but like I said, there's a lot of growth in this area. So there's a, there's a lot of challenges, like what we refer to as growing pains, right? Next slide, please. So the Cardinal Drive project, it was a three hundred and eleven million dollar project when it lit. Is estimated to complete in twenty thirty. And then our East Tex project, which is the northern piece, uh essentially, if you take from the the Hollywood overpass north, that's the uh the East Tex project. So that's about five hundred and thirty four million dollars and it's also estimated currently to to complete in twenty thirty. There are some some challenges that we are that we are currently facing um on on both our projects. But uh but we are working, you know, to try to get those things resolved, so. Next slide, please. One thing that I I wanted to to share with y'all, um the East Texas aesthetics, as you can see up here, we we worked with with the city of Beaumont, we partnered with you all, uh bless you. We partnered with you all on on making sure that we reached out, we had different options that we reached out to, well, to you, to the city. And and the city put together uh a survey to go out to the public and allow them the opportunity to select which option they preferred. So very, very important for us to to make sure that we got the the opinion of the public on this particular situation. We wanted to make sure that the public was heard, that they felt that they were heard on on some of what the what comes on the retaining walls, what what the beautification was gonna be. Now, obviously, that's, that is something different that had not been done in the in the Beaumont District prior to uh me becoming the district engineer or uh previous folks within my staff. But but this is the the option that uh the preferred option that the the citizens that voted selected for the East Tex location. So when we are done with this project, you will see um what you see up there on our retaining walls. Next slide, please. And also along those lines too, uh while we, we wanna make sure that we honor the memory of uh of Maury Myers. And when we are done with this project, I ten is actually gonna go over uh what is extension, like what Laura was and all that. So we wanted to keep the same type of aesthetic elements. So we will have a a plaque, a plaque that, as you see up there, that says in honor of Maury Myers. It'll have similar uh architectural uh features, like the the bridge that was there before we we removed it. And also, there's gonna be some lum- some luminaires that are gonna be similar to to what was existing before. Because again, we we understand the significance uh and wanted to make sure that we honor that. So next slide. Okay, so the I ten widening from Hampshire Road to three sixty five, that was a project that was a hundred and eight billion dollars and is estimated to complete in early twenty twenty seven. So that one, let me make sure that I got my information right. We are still continuing to to do the concrete pavement operations at Hampshire Road. We are doing cement treated base and concrete pavement for the eastbound lanes uh west of three sixty five. We're replacing concrete at the eastbound frontage roads around three sixty five. And we are constructing a temporary detour payment from just of east of three sixty five. Uh we're milling the existing westbound roadway and the FM three sixty five bridge is scheduled to come down in March of twenty twenty six. Uh for the FM three sixty five to Walden Road was a hundred and thirty six million dollar project that that led in um July of eighteen. We're estimated to complete that one in early twenty twenty six. And uh on that one, the contractor is finishing a lot of the dress up work, striping signage um at the on wrap at Smith Road. And the contractor, within the next couple of months, they will have finished the face construction at Kid Gully and is placing the stone rip rap at the channel's corners. Uh the contractor is also finishing the sole nail walls and rip rap. And the bend caps at Boyd. The contractor has on the schedule to set beams by next month at Boyd. And they're also placing a bond breaker and tying concrete paving steel at the the west of the project. Next slide, please. So this right here is our contact information. If you see there on the left hand side, the TechStot Beaumont District, that that, the four nine eight nine two seventy three eleven is our office number. So our public information officer, Tanya Avila, you can see her information right there, her office number and her cell phone number. And then also, as you notice there on the right hand side, we have our social media pages. So we have Facebook, we have um X, Instagram and Nextdoor. So that is where we do a lot of our posting of of some some upcoming closures. We notify folks of of some things that we're seeing out there. Uh we also share a lot of the the safety events and things like that that we do in the area. So um you know, Tanya has been doing a great job of making sure that everybody gets uh that information. And she's also gonna be working with y'all's staff to to ensure that we are communicating well ahead of time for for future city planned events and things like that uh so that we can help coordinate some of our our closures or provide additional information to help folks navigate to and from those events. Uh next slide, please. And lastly, uh this right here, if anybody that wants to, anybody from the audience that wants to go ahead and put your, get your phones out there, look at that QR code, that's our uh contact information. So all the phone numbers that I've shared with you before, that's right there in on the left hand side. And then on the right hand side, what you see is our drive texas dot org um site. That is where we put any of our construction projects, any delays. If we have crashes and we have to close down the the roads temporarily or what have you during inclement weather events, those, that is updated, those are real time uh updates that we provide for the public so that they can make traveling decisions uh as they, before they leave their house. So um next slide, or I think, is that my last slide? Okay, so with that, um I will open it to any questions that anybody may have of me and also or or my staff. That's the reason why I brought them, because they're better suited to answer some of these questions. But additionally, I would like to uh to share that uh we're always available to to be able to answer any questions. You know, uh obviously, the mayor, the mayor knows, I I I text them all the time. We we talk quite often, so really appreciate the relationship that that we have, the communication, I think is outstanding. And and I really want to encourage all of you to to ensure that you have that same type of communication with my staff so that uh, because we are here and uh and we're we're always willing to help. If there's any questions as to any of our programs uh or how do we, how do we address some of these issues, my staff is fully prepared and myself to to come and visit with you all and uh and just provide the information necessary so that we can help equip everybody to answer any questions the public may have. So uh we're always happy to do that. So thank you for that opportunity and so, any questions?
Thank you. Council members? Council, Councilmember Crenshaw.
Uh Mr. Gonzalez, thank you for being here today. I um I'm glad we went to lunch and kudos to the mayor for facilitating that a couple of weeks ago because I think uh we would be here till midnight if I had my grievances to air with you that uh I was able to do the other day at lunch. So that's good news because I've saved uh everyone in this room from having to hear that. But I would say that half of the complaints that I get daily since I've become a council member in May are about TechStot. So I appreciate you coming here today and being here today with all due respect to Tanya or your communications individual. I think that there's a lot of room for improvement, okay? It seems like when higher highway projects would start in Texas, there'd be a sign that would say it costs this much and the contractor is so and so. But you don't see those anymore. I would like to see those signs with an email address of who people should contact when they have concerns or comments about those highway construction uh projects, just something to throw out there. The number one complaint and question that I get from constituents is, why do y'all start so many projects without finishing the ones that are currently going on? So why are we starting all these different projects in Beaumont when y'all haven't finished FM three sixty five and Walden Road and going out to um Hampshire Road? You say those are gonna be done in twenty six, twenty seven, so I think we should probably add a year or two on to that estimate. Why do we start all these projects and tear up all the roads and then extend this out? So uh I think that y'all should do a better job of providing that information on your websites. Why we had to tear down Maury Myers Bridge and inconvenience people for the next five years, assuming this project is on time. And why we had to do that right now and we couldn't have waited to have done that when we were actually ready to expand uh the highway. And with all due respect, I appreciate the concern on aesthetics. No one that I've ever talked to on TechStot that has concerns or complaints about you guys care about the aesthetics. They want highway projects to be done sooner than ten to fifteen years. I do know that you've only had this position for five years. So I do appreciate the fact that you've made and implemented a lot of policy changes and tried to get projects done. But we talked about it during lunch. There are projects that were supposed to have been done five years ago out on Cardinal Drive that are still going on today. And it's like that project's still going on and that contractor still hasn't completed it. But we've started uh projects now here in Beaumont and torn up half the roads in our town uh for a project that's gonna take five years. So I think that you've got a lot of room for improvement on communication. So I think that you've got a lot of room for improvement on communication. And I would really like to see your staff put more effort towards addressing people's concerns and giving better explanation to the public. Because I certainly don't have the answer. And Tina, can we please put up the picture that I sent you? Here is yesterday, a complaint that I got yesterday from someone being very concerned. About y'all tearing up the road and leaving large pieces of concrete. All over the side of the highway that become, could become projectiles during a storm. And here we are in the height of hurricane season, okay? Uh, with all this going on, this is supposed to be an evacuation route. Uh, we have crazy weather going on all over Texas and the country right now. And your contractor has gone and left the entire side of the highway. Littered with giant concrete boulders that have been there for weeks. Uh, again, these are just things that when you start off your presentation saying your number one concern is safety. It leaves a lot to be desired. Uh, and I want you to know that I am committed to helping you guys with better communication. And getting better information out there. That's why this week I did the the zipper merge uh on my social media to help you guys educate everyone on zipper merges. But your department really has got to do a better job in Beaumont of helping this council and helping this community. Understand what y'all are doing and why you're doing it. Because right now, we're in the dark and it's very confusing. And it's extremely frustrating.
So if I may address some of the the comments that uh council member made. So I'm gonna let Lisa maybe speak a little bit to why we do the funding, uh, because you know. If if you wanna touch on why we let some of these projects the way that we do, and then I'll speak to the the duration. And uh, and some of those other construction elements that you're gonna be sharing in the picture. So please, if you don't mind, sharing why we do what we do.
Absolutely. So I can understand the frustration that you have, Councilwoman Crenshaw. And a lot of times, it seems like uh decisions are made in a vacuum and that is not the case. Um, what I want to assure you of is that we have public involvement at nearly every phase of every project that we do. Um, some of it is done directly by the district at our level. Some of it is done statewide when we have funding programs that come through, such as our UTP. Um, and our tip and stip that are approved on a every four-year basis and then revised as we go. Um, but funding comes when it comes. And I'm sure that you guys are all very familiar with the fact that you must strike when the iron is hot. Um, it ebbs and flows, federal funding and state funding. And so we have projects on the books that we're working toward getting funding for for decades. And when it finally does come in, we have to act on that or we risk losing that fund. So we we do the projects as we can afford to do them. We have a plan. That master plan comes out and is open for public review every time that we have a new plan to present. Um, and we are currently making changes to the project pages that we have on techstop.gov. So if you have signed up for updates, you'll be able to see the updated information. Some of those are for active construction projects and others are for ones that are still planned.
Okay, uh, so my picture is up now. Uh, why would y'all allow your contractor to leave concrete projectiles? All down the road like that for uh a storm to come through and start throwing those all over vehicles and all over uh. The area around there. Why would that not be something that would be collected and put in a dump truck and hauled off at the same time that it's being? Destroyed.
Thank you, Lisa.
So, uh, I mean, don't you all agree this is, doesn't look good, does it?
It 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 does not. It's part of the construction phase that's going on right now. So as you see here, what it's the 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 broken concrete is between barrier. There's no traffic going in that area.
Well, I get that, but that doesn't stop that from.
So, you know, there's no cars, uh, the, you know, the, I don't believe. In within those barriers, uh, Councilman Crenshaw. So let me explain the the. So what we're doing, uh, this is gonna be phase one step three. They removed the, they broke back the center barrier. Okay, they're in the process of doing that right now. It's also going to go from almost UPPR all the way up to that where that curb is. And then we're also breaking up the barrier from eleven street going up to around seven street in that center area. What we're gonna do when we're that concrete is removed, traffic will be moved into that area. So I ten westbound or eastbound, excuse me, lanes will be moved into that area and then we'll start removing the reti- uh, retaining wall.
Why not have your contractor pick up the concrete when they turn it into that?
They are working on it. So we do have an issue right now. There is a a French drain system right there on the farther end. I guess just go down to the south. Uh, we are looking at the redesign of that French drain uh for the hydraulics of roadway. So we got with the EOR, the contractor, a consultant that did the plans. And we are working on that to get it fixed. Once we get that done, that is gonna be removed, re-striped and face construction of phase one step three.
So the French drain is preventing y'all from picking up those?
No, no, it's it's part of the steel of the construction, uh.
So why not have your contractor with a dump truck pick up the concrete after it chops it up into those pieces?
We can get the contractor to do that. And that's up to their phasing. Uh, right now, they are working on some of the furnished roads around that old acre dealership. And some drill shafts and install, still installing the under drainage around the eastbound furnished roads.
When is that gonna be picked up? And I'm asking these questions so I can let this person know who sent me this picture.
Uh, right, so so in like any.
A month, two months?
Well, so like any construction project, um, you know, you you can't just pick up everything as soon as you. As soon as as demolish. Anybody that's endured any kind of construction, even within your home, uh, I'm I'm fairly certain. They don't clean everything up as every conclusion of every day when they're when they're doing their construction. Because obviously, they're gonna still break some more things up while they're resolving that that.
I know, but my 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 home construction's not out on a highway like this with large boulders of concrete that can.
But at the same time, it's one of those things that once they get everything, um, like like budgets are. Well, we talk about budgets, right? And you mentioned uh with hurricane season and things like that. If we talk about things like that, we're hoping that people first would evacuate uh well in advance of the storm. And part of our roles at Tech Stop is once, once a storm comes through, we're able to assess the damages, clean everything up. Before we allow the traffic to come move back into the area. That's what we do as the department. So we, I I can't tell you that this is gonna be done within, you know, a day or two, things like that.
Well, I wouldn't expect to be done with it a day or two, but I would like to tell the person that sent me this picture. These boulders will be cleaned up in thirty days, sixty days, ninety days. And it just concerns me that it's like, well, we're working on a French drain and we'll get to it whenever we can. And I just think that that's really concerning. You see these grooves at the bottom where things can get out from underneath those barriers? I mean, loose rock can get out and then that gets thrown up by one of these eighteen-wheelers and hits someone's windshield and then we have a major accident.
Uh, I can understand that, uh, Councilman Crenshaw. Um, you know, I'll get, we can talk after this and get a better date with the contractor to see exactly when that's going.
And I think emphasis should be made on the contractor to go pick that stuff up.
Oh, yes, sir. And they definitely will. Like I said, uh, that traffic will be within that area. So all that area will be cleaned. Uh, dressed up, striped and.
Hi, Christmas?
Uh, I, let me get with you after they had to give, I wanna give you, I don't wanna say exact date, talk with the contractor.
So the overall plan is to move over to the next phase, like Dave said. Like Dave mentioned is, once they get some of those alignment issues addressed, then the plan is to move. Uh, that barrier over so that we can go to the next phase. And that's part of the things that we're trying to address.
And and you you talked about hurricane too. You know, it it is our plan to always keep two lanes south, not uh sixty-nine at all times through construction. And I tend also two lanes going to Louisiana. So no matter what during the construction, we are gonna keep that through hurricane season. Um, and when we get toward that phase one step three, it will be done. And we can talk later if you want to look at exact dates. Yes, sir.
So so what what Dave will definitely do is address this with the contractor and be able to provide you a better timeline of when this, uh, we anticipate that.
Yes, sir, correct. And and again, I wasn't intending of this to be some gotcha moment. I just want you to see the type of questions that I get. Daily about Tech Stop that I don't know how to answer and just, there's just a lot of frustrated folks.
And and I wanna encourage y'all again, uh, the whole point is because we don't want you to have to feel that necessary burden. Uh, refer those questions to to Dave, to Fred, to our staff so that we are able to answer those things.
And I I share your name and phone numbers uh all the time, so I'll continue to.
And and when I talked to the previous council members earlier too, that, you know, you're welcome to call me anytime. And if if you have uh anyone that, you know, has questions, please free, reach out to me.
My friends at the police department say, Mr. Collins, you do an excellent job at communication, so I do appreciate that. Uh, but overall, I think your department has uh significant room for improvement. Thank you.
So I will say one thing with regards to uh the overall communication, as you mentioned. Uh, and Lisa shared this before. We have public involvement throughout all of our projects. And in in a lot of our projects, some of the things that we've been doing uh just over the last three years is we have secondary public meetings. We give ample opportunities for everybody to come and visit and see what projects we are gonna be doing in the area. So we not only inform the public and and invite everybody else to attend. But we also update our project pages. So everybody knows because the the information is out there. Um, obviously, if some people do not attend some of these public meetings, uh, you know, you you can. You can bring a horse to water, right? But you can't make them drink. So from that standpoint, we're we're doing everything that we are supposed to be doing with communication. And actually going above and beyond in some cases. So in in. In in Tanya's defense, I will say she has been doing a very good job of putting those notices out there. And we have, my staff has done a very good job of public communication as far as before the projects let. Now, as I mentioned, look, I don't make excuses for anything that happens at Tech Stop because I am the head of this district. But problems that may have been inherited, we are fixing. And is it perfect? No. Is anybody perfect? No. But we're gonna keep working to do things better. So appreciate that and we'll keep working to uh to improve things in this district.
Yes, uh, council member Turner and then council member Sherwood.
Uh, fir- first and foremost, seriously, thank you guys for coming because it's just like me going to a town hall where I know. Citizens are kinda upset with me and being able to stand there and just take it. You know, like, that's one of the things I learned as being elected official. You gotta be able to take it if you wanna be in that position. So thank you guys for coming. I understand it's, we're experiencing some development we never ever seen in a very long time in Beaumont. But well, I kinda get like beat up in some of these neighborhood associations, other places is. People simply don't understand, you know, with different entities. I'll give you example, uh, Washington Boulevard, when you enter onto the freeway, onto the ramp, it's a pretty rough entrance. I I actually know where to kinda dodge it to avoid it almost every time, even. On I ten, you exit over there by the pop of those area, it's pretty rough over there. Like literally, once you get off, you kinda know. Kinda what to duck and dodge. But that was one of my main things, defeat the roads. And I understand you guys are redoing them. But maybe just filling in some of those spots that we are actually experiencing, I will say turbulence. Yeah.
That's that's a nice way to put it. But um, so yes, that's something that we actually visited while we while we had lunch uh last week. Um, and you know, good conversations again. There's a, there's a lot of things that we are obviously bound through different contracts, right? Um, and like anybody knows, as 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 I'm sure you are all aware, when you let a contract for X amount of dollars. Any additional work, obviously, is uh where a lot of contractors uh come back with a change order and you pay a premium price for those kinds of things. So what we are doing in the Beaumont district is where some of these items may not have been included, we are addressing that with our maintenance forces. So Fred and his staff, they went out there and they filled a lot of these puddles, right? But those are temporary fixes. So after we, after we had uh lunch, uh, Dave and I went and drove. Uh, and then after that, I called Keith, my director of maintenance, and we went and drove and and um. Once uh, once I, I got him off the backseat because he jumped back there because of the rough, I'm just kidding. It wasn't that bad. But uh, but once we, it is not that bad. But uh, but once we uh assessed the situation. Uh, Keith came up with with a plan for us to uh to be able to address some of those concerns. And so I asked Keith to step up here because he uh he can provide a little bit of an update of what we're about to do there.
Yeah, so we're, so we plan to start Monday with our special job crews and our crew and Fred's crew. And making repairs on several locations uh where the asphalt pavement has failed. We're gonna repair those where the concrete pavement has uh failed. We're gonna take that out and put asphalt in. And compact it real well so that uh it lasts until the contractor can get there. So that will start. Our plan right now is to start that Monday.
We're milling that, right?
Right, we'll mill that out. Yeah, and we'll and we'll mill um some areas, especially like on ramps, to get a smoother ride. And then we come uh after September first, when I get a new pot of money for a new budget. We plan to do some overlays to make that much smoother.
Okay, thank you, because I, me and my wife worry y'all all the time about why I'm replacing that rim, because she gotta slow down. But my my next thing is, we have a car dealership and we kinda brought this up. We consistently have flooding over there in front of the car dealership. What is the name of it? Somebody, please help me. Classic. Uh, is there any kind of way we can do a better job? I know it looked like it's already been laid, but what I mean by kinda working together, I'm glad you're here. But working together, maybe getting with the city to kinda do some drainage or partner with y'all on doing some drainage. Prior to uh laying that new road, because the last thing we wanna do is come back and ask for permission to tear it up to kinda address the drainage issues. Because that's a pretty serious flood area. Every time we get a heavy rain, this is almost, those residents are kinda forced to go another option. So that's something I, I think maybe if we can get together, I know things are already happening. But that's a kinda consistent thing I've been asking for almost for the last three years, when you guys first start coming. And I'm thankful y'all are coming. But I've kinda been consistent on that. And another thing is, we're having some issues under our underpasses with homeless and camping. I've seen in other cities where they have the no camping signs underneath the freeway so the the law enforcement can actually address it and. People would see it. I I kinda would like to see us do something like that if we can in the future, because that's another thing. We have those guys that are homeless that are kinda navigating in between cars and almost, you know, having accidents or getting hit. So maybe, I know that's not a solely on you guys, but maybe just the signs will, it'll kinda give a visual. As well as our police officers did get out there and actually address that.
So we've been able to, we actually met with your your council before uh a long time ago with regards to the. The signs and the homeless challenges with a lot of your staff. And we have, we continue to partner with the city of Beaumont. Uh, when when we are uh informed of any uh situations where we need to remove uh homeless people from under our system. Uh, you know, for safety reasons and things of that nature, uh, we we will assist with the the cleanup efforts, obviously, right? There was uh, there's been some conversation with regards to legality, pressing charges, all these kinds of things that are way more uh involved. Than uh than just a simple clean out. Uh, as far as the signs, we do have the uh the information necessary. So whoever from your staff that wants to reach out to to my staff to make sure that we get those proper signs, because it has to be a standard messaging. The um, obviously, if there is a city ordinance that 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 prohibits um homeless encampments and things like that. Uh, that would be beneficial to have those, that information so that we can then uh work with you all for for the signing to be able to be done. But that's definitely something that can be done. And to address your uh your concern with the drainage uh at the classic dealership. So obviously, as I mentioned before, this project was underway a long time ago, right? So if there were drainage concerns years ago, uh, those are some some of the conversations that should have been held by city staff. With Tech Stop staff uh during the design process, right? Um, I am not saying that there's nothing that can can't be done, that that, nothing that can be done now. However, uh, we are only restricted to certain limits within our right of way, right? Anything beyond that, that's not something that we can do. But uh, but if if the city wants to make some improvements to the drainage at that location. Uh, I am sure that reaching out to to my staff, to Dave Collins, as I mentioned before, as to what is it that y'all are planning on doing or would like to do. Uh, we can definitely uh have that conversation and see what can be done. But but again, I cannot say this enough that these projects don't happen overnight. They take years. Thirty, thirty percent reviews, sixty percent review, ninety percent reviews. Um, the cities get the opportunity to review our plans, to sit in a lot of our our public involvement meetings. So so when staff, uh, whether it's Public Works or whoever, Utilities, whoever it is that that attends these things. Uh, they have the opportunity to review. Um, and and again, we don't, we don't just design things in a vacuum. So uh, I just wanna make sure that I'm 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 clear on that.
Yeah, and just my last thing, just, you know, I I kinda agree with Councilman Crenshaw with uh contract accountability. I think if the city and the citizens knew who these contractors were, who were kinda leaving our city in the condition that they're leaving it in, if they do the work. We would do a better job assisting y'all with holding them accountable, because we travel to Dallas, San Antonio, the intersections and. Everything don't look as bad. So if we can. So, if we can know how to reach out to some of these contractors, express our concern, we would definitely be willing to support you guys there because I understand it's a lot of moving parts.
Absolutely. And there are signs at the beginning of our projects that show who is the contractor that is over that and it has usually a phone number and a P.O. box that you can actually write to. So, but we can make sure, Kenneth and Dave, that those signs are out there and we'll make sure that we verify that. But at the same time too, obviously, we, you know, we are, we're happy to share that information, you know, if you reach out to Dave's staff.
Yes, sir. You've been very responsive to me, so I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Councilmember Sherwood.
Um, there's some merge issues on I-10, right? Lanes that are merging and cars don't know that they're merging and I just don't know what needs to happen or I don't know if it's striping, I don't know if it's what, but on I-10, there's a lot of lanes that are not lanes or they're becoming one lane and there's an issue. I've seen, I've almost been hit about 10 times, like I don't know. So, just something to bring up.
Yes, ma'am.
There's a lot of lanes that are merging on I-10, particularly near Walden and Washington when you're getting up, that lane merges just before you get to Fennett. And then there's some merging on I-10 near 11th Street where it's stupid with the 18-wheelers and whatever, it's a disaster of epic proportions. I don't even know where to start, so.
Yes, thank you. And so, some of that to address the northbound 69 to east I-10, that was something that we visited about also last week. There is what, you know, we refer to as like ghost striping, right? When we start doing some of the phase changes, you know, doing that on concrete pavement, it leaves still a residue of the previous stripe that was there. So, it does cause some confusion and we recognize that on the westbound location as well as obviously, we see that that's going on in the northbound, eastbound location as well. So, in the westbound location, as you leave here from downtown and you start going over to, you know, like if you're headed to Lumberton or you start getting south, we did skid abrasion at that, which is making sure that you go in there and you essentially grind the concrete to remove all that ghost striping, if you will, right? Which I'm very proud of the way that that looks. I think these guys did a great job of making sure that we got that taken care of. We plan on doing the same thing in the other direction as well. At half a million dollars per occurrence that we do that, we delayed doing the skid abrasion on the northbound side until they finished addressing that issue that we have with that drain that Dave was referring to right now. Because obviously, it's $500,000 if we do it now. And then, once we shift that phase, we're going to do another $500,000 a couple of months later. So, that's the reason why we've been delaying that. However, Dave and his staff, they made sure that they restriped that. We need to add some additional. We were going to do some black striping that was going to go with the white restripe that they just recently did to help guide folks through there. And I agree with you also, we take a look at any of our merge signs, things like that that are, that are not giving the correct message. We're continuously addressing those things. So, I appreciate you bringing that up and, you know, we'll make sure that we verify those things so that we're informing the public with plenty of notice, right?
Merge on I-10 is crazy.
No, thank you for that. We'll, yeah, we'll address that. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate y'all's late night with us, too.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you. All right, now we, for those that are here for the proclamation and the presentation and you'd like to leave, now's the time to do so. And certainly, thank you for coming. We will have executive session later in this meeting to consider matters related to contemplating or pending litigation in accordance with Section 551.071 of the Government Code, Caleb Fenter, and Beaumont Professional Firefighters Local 399, intervenors versus City of Beaumont, Christopher S. Boone, Kenneth Williams, Roy West, Earl White, Taylor Neal, Mike Getz, Odwin Samuel, Charles Durio, Albert Turner, and Randy Fellshaw. Calls number B210244. And now's the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. You may make public comments on the consent agenda or the regular agenda items 1 through 7 or any other topic. Citizens wishing to speak on item number 8 will be given opportunity to speak during the public hearing. The city clerk will call your name when it's your time to speak. When you approach the podium, please say your address, city and state. You will have three minutes for public comments. The green light will come on when you approach the podium and the red light will come on when your time is up. And please remember that myself or our council cannot respond whenever you're making these comments, but someone from our office will contact you.
I'm Thafero Richards, 5275 Parkview Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Good evening, City Council and City Citizens of Beaumont, Texas. The steps of the righteous are ordered by the Lord. I am not her, but I am the ghost from I-10 at Smith Road that got ran down by, ran into a concrete barrier by 18-wheeler in a 350Z.
Thank you, LaShawn. I'm glad you didn't have to pick me up.
So, War IV is becoming a ghost town that only exists on the map to some of you. The only time most of you know us is when we won a championship with a ball. We have buildings that are boarded up with mold that looks like black cottage cheese. We have homesteads leaning on two-picks, potholes the size of the Grand Canyon, and Mr. Fred Miller left. We got dark roads with trees that's been hanging like they were planted in the Garden of Eden by Adam, in the Garden of Eden in Genesis. As taxpayers, we demand a rebirth and we want some equal development. I heard y'all talk about 100 million here, 100 million there, 2, 2, 2. I didn't hear anything about War IV. We exist, we pay taxes too. I didn't hear one thing said about War IV. Thank you for the upcoming Veterans Compound. It's such an honor to commend them for their service and keep them here so they don't have to go all the way to Houston for care. Thank you for the one sidewalk councilman that's been built on Fennett Road. We only asked in 2016. Limited bus routes, limited operational hours, increased road rage like Formula One, people running lights, stop signs, flooded roads like swimming pools with sewer and rats on floating banana boats. That's what our streets look like in War IV. We have water that we drink that causes us cancer from exposed pipes that were built in Gladys City in 1901. Mm-hmm. So, as you know, the steps of the righteous are ordered by the Lord. Yep, I'm hotter than a deck of fire. Officer, I'm not going to say your name. You made my disabled 75-year-old mother cry. Mm-hmm, we got a problem. You overran that merging yield sign on 11th Street. Email four of you. You know who you are. You never apologized about her insulin. You never apologized that you almost T-boned us. You never, you never acknowledged that we were already established on the main road per Texas transportation codes. You admitted that you were not on a service call, your siren was not on, your lights were not on, and you never identified yourself as a Beaumont policeman until you had a conference once I requested a sergeant. Well, $300 down.
Thank you, ma'am.
God bless y'all.
Let me go because I might get a tracker for that trap over the top to hit. Andy, and I think it's Gerald's, 275 Infield Lane, Beaumont, Texas. I'm sorry, how do you pronounce your last name?
Gerald's.
Gerald's, thank you.
Mayor, Council, City Staff, my name is Andy Gerald's. I live at 275 Infield Lane. I'd like to comment on the upcoming bond election. I have been impressed by the diligent efforts of the Bond Committee in developing their recommendations to the council and I commend the council on facilitating a transparent process. As a resident of this city for 17 years, beginning with my time as a student at Lamar and now as a husband and father of three children, I'm deeply invested in the city's well-being as I know each and every one of you are. I'm concerned about two potential bond projects, the Point Parkway and Dallin Road extensions. Beaumont currently maintains an extensive infrastructure, including 667 miles of streets, over 840 miles of drainage ditches, and more than 400 miles of storm sewer lines. While I commend the Public Works Department on their ongoing efforts to maintain our infrastructure, the reality is that Beaumont's suburban development pattern has resulted in an unsustainable burden on our city's maintenance costs. We've collectively inherited a city that we can no longer afford to maintain. This is not a reflection of the council's or the city manager's leadership. This is something we inherited. Nonetheless, it is our collective responsibility to address this issue and ensure that future generations of Beaumont residents do not face these same challenges. The prudent decision is to stop constructing infrastructure that cannot be adequately maintained and redirect our efforts towards areas with existing essential infrastructure, namely downtown. The plumbing, streets, sidewalks, trees, and drainage systems already in place downtown remain underutilized in favor of sprawl on the city's edges. The firm Urban3 offers economic analyses to help communities see what truly builds value. Their analysis of Lafayette, Louisiana, a city comparable to Beaumont in many aspects, revealed that downtown Lafayette was the sole profitable segment of their entire city while the outskirts resulted in a net loss in terms of tax revenue generated to maintain their city's infrastructure. This pattern is prevalent in most American cities, including Beaumont. The council's intention to revitalize our downtown is commendable and needed, but it is naive to think that we can invest over $61 million in two road extensions on the outskirts of town and that not have a net negative effect on Beaumont as a whole. These two road extensions, though well-intentioned, will only serve to hamper our ability to maintain crucial infrastructure. Therefore, I strongly urge this council to remove the Point Parkway and Dallin Road extensions from November's ballot. I would welcome the opportunity to engage in further discussions with council members to provide additional evidence supporting my assertions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
I'm David Pete, 6355 Chin Lane, Beaumont, Texas.
Good evening, Council. David Pete, 6355 Chin Lane, Beaumont, Texas. One of the issues that I have, I've listened pretty extensively to the council. Is microphone on?
Yes.
Okay, to the city council and I've heard the debates and some of you going and speaking to the engineers and what have you. But the one thing is, is that you as a city council are tasked with a certain duty and anything outside of that is not acceptable. And so, we're talking about a bond and all these things here, we're talking about what to include, what not to include. You are exclusively bound to the city ordinance of what you can do as a council. You cannot do your own thing, make your own decisions, and anything of that nature. Who runs the city? That man right there. The city manager runs the city. You as a council are combined to make sure that the things that go in this city are being affected, that you do a fair and impartial duties to make sure that all citizens, all citizens are accounted for, all citizens are addressed, not just who you want to or who you feel like you want to put there. And when you put together a committee, that committee has no authority to do anything. Recommendations is mundane because there is no power that they have to make any changes in this city. You guys do. So, when you put together this committee, this committee is only giving a recommendation to you. You don't have to accept that. You even have to listen to them. But if you listen to them and you take one part of the city and make that your goal or you take another part of the city and make that your goal, then you're showing favoritism to one part over another and you, you are, you are not permitted to do that. So, I will highly suggest to some of you who are new to the council, make sure you are aware of what your duties and responsibilities are. And let me read something here to you here just a little bit, right here. It says, since Beaumont Charter was adopted in 1947, the city has operated as a council manager, formed the government. This means that an elected group of councilmen, collective called the City Council, will be responsible for enacting local legislation, adopting budgets, determining policies, and appointing the city manager and other officials such as city clerks, city magistrate, and city attorneys. So, everything that you do, you got to make sure you're doing it within policy and with ordinance of this city. Anything outside of that, you're doing your own little petition, that's out of order and you are in violation of your oath. And if you're in violation of your oath, then you're subject to be removed.
Thank you, sir.
Albert Harrison, 1240 Ashley, Beaumont, Texas.
Mayor, City Council, other city staff, other concerned citizens that are present. Before I get into the subject matter in which I wish to address you all, I have another comment to make pertaining to the bond issues. I've only attended two bond meetings, but I never, never heard nor I seen anything that addresses doing anything for the homeless. You talk about fire station, police headquarters, but nothing for the homeless. So, that needs to be considered. Now, the reason I'm here today is because I'm very, very upset to the mere fact that sometimes I'm able to pay my water bill on time because my check hit the bank to where I can pay it according to the due date. Now, last month, the due date was June 26th. My check hit the bank June 27th. I can't pay it. Now, I'm charged this month with a $10 late charge. One day late, let's use some common sense, please. Now, I wouldn't be addressing the issue in the manner I'm addressing it if I was the only one affected by it, but there are other senior citizens, other individuals that receive their checks on the first of the month. Just so happens that my bank puts my check into my account approximately two or three days before. Now, the VA says the first, the first, I should receive it, but the bank says, okay, we're going to give it to you ahead of time. So, I ain't able to pay it. Now, I will say that I would attempt to address the issue a different way, meaning that try to put money back in the event that I can't pay it on time. Things happen. Other thing, money had to be spent so I couldn't pay it on time. So, I'm asking, please use common sense. And also, I asked for the policy in which this is established. I filled out an information request with the City Secretary. The response was, that's no policy. So, I need some clarification as to how this $10 charge is being assessed to me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Addie Allen, 9695 Gross, Beaumont, Texas.
Good evening, City Manager, Mr. Williams, the Mayor, Council Administrators. My name is Addie Allen, 9695 Gross, already been established. I'm standing here because I listened to the presentation for evacuation. We have TV, telephone, Facebook, Instagram, all of those media carriers, a lot in the sky, a lot of stuff going on. Storms are not always high winds, as it was said in the presentation. We have emergency management personnel and a lot of it includes flood, electrical, chemical, wind, explosions, maybe even sabotage in the world that we're living in right now. So, there's So there's been chemical leaks here in Beaumont, spills caused maybe boil water notices that maybe we didn't get. So I have stated more than one time that sirens notifications is paramount, that we really need it. And I feel like when we hear these presentations, it's always on the con side. And I'm a pro activist on it. And I would like to see some professional to come up here and advise us what sirens actually do for a city, what sirens actually do to save lives, an audible sound where everybody can hear it, police sirens. We have all kinds of sirens, fire. We have sirens, we have noise from the railroad. So I don't understand, as I've been standing up here for two or three years, talking about sirens. Yes, you can hear sirens if you're inside. And in the presentation, I felt a little perturbed because it was said that if you're inside, you can't hear outside sirens. Yes, you can. There's no need for 29. In that presentation that I gave to the city, it also included Jefferson County as well as the city of Beaumont. So those two need to be separated. It does not cost a million dollars. I have right here where I contacted a siren company, and it might have been $35,000. That is exhausted as of December 22. So I'm appealing to city manager and to the council. Let's look into it, just like it's been said up here. The weather is really different for us. We've got heat domes up. Thank you for your service. You know where I'm coming from. Have a good day, good night.
That's all I have, mayor.
All right. And with that, we're closing public comments. Thank you for those who spoke. And at this point, I'd like a motion in a second for approval of the consent agenda. We are going to have to remove item G and have a separate motion on that. So this is for all items on the consent agenda minus item G. May I have a motion in a second?
Second.
Yeah, councilman. All right, there is a motion in a second for approval of the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Councilman Durio.
Know how much the settlement is going to be on item D?
No, sir.
Item. Item D. That's it? Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda minus item G, would you please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, would you read item G, please?
Thank you, mayor. Counsel to consider resolution authorizing membership in the Texas 21 Association. And it doesn't come with the recommendation, but with this group, as a member, either the city manager or the mayor can become a member of a governmental entity. And the city manager recommends the mayor become the representative if you approve it.
All right, is there a motion in a second on item G as read?
Sorry, the motion would need to include that the mayor be appointed as a city representative.
All right, as read then, with the addition.
I move to approve that we appoint Mayor Roy West to serve in the SC- SIS-Tex 21.
Second.
Could it just be the mayor? And it's for the purpose of the resolution, just so that we don't have to do it when Roy West decides not to continue?
All right, there has been a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving G as read, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number one?
I'd like to make a motion before we go into the regular agenda.
Well, let's go with one, and then we'll...
Okay, I got you.
Item number one. Counsel to consider resolution authorizing the city manager to award a contractor Structure Guard LLC of Austin, Texas for Cat Tail Marsh Wetlands Outfall Piling Rehabilitation Project. And it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number one?
Move to approve.
There is a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number one, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. At this point, we're going to need to recess into executive session for the item number two. And I would like to do that, but at first, I would go ahead and like to move forward with the public hearing and discuss eight, since we have a number of people here, and I'm not sure how long our executive session will last. And I'd hate to have these people wait around for another hour, hour and a half while we do that. So, Mr. City Manager, could you please take us into the public hearing for item number eight?
Counsel to conduct the public hearing to receive comments concerning the proposed amendments of Article Six, gaming sites and gaming machines from the city of Beaumont's Code of Ordinances.
All right, the public hearing is open. Do we have...
Yes, sir, we have two. I think it's Mohammed Naim, 2640 Rigby Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Good evening, mayor and city council member. My name is Mohammed Naim. I respectfully respect that consider the purpose ordinance banning gaming site with our city. This ban would place significant burden on our business and potentially forcing some use, some of us, and shut down entirely. Neighboring city continue to allow this machine, and it would be unfair to single out our city with the county for such as restriction. We urge you to allow existing business to continue operating while avoiding guidance or new legislation from the state level. We are the law-abiding business owner who pay tax, employ local residents, and contribute meaningfully to our local economy. We ask you to consider these ordinance. Thank you. Thanks, city council and mayor.
Thank you.
Adele Samar, 3501 Magnolia Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Respect to council members, honorable mayor, and the members of the community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today and regarding the proposed ban on the amusement machines in the city of Beaumont. I understand the concerns that have led to this proposal, and I appreciate the effort to protect the integrity of our community. However, I respectfully ask the council to consider broader legal and economic implications before moving forward. This ordinance seems to rely on the Forworth versus Riley case. It's important to note that this case does not give cities the authority to enact a blanket ban. The decision from the Forworth Court of Appeals is not binding in our region. And the Texas Supreme Court's decision to not review it is not a ruling on the merits. No new state law has been passed as a result. Under the Texas Constitution, city ordinances cannot conflict with the state law. Many of us here in the audience supporting right now operate with valid licenses and permits issued by the state of Texas. The state not only authorizes these machines, but also collects fees and issues decals for them. Unless those licenses are revoked by the state, I respectfully submit that the city should not remove to, should not invalidate them. This situation is similar to how the state regulates alcohol or tobacco. A city cannot simply ban those sales when a state license is in place. Doing so is at a difficult precedent and create legal uncertainty. If this ordinance is passed, it could result in long and costly legal challenges involving dozens of local businesses. These cases could last years and burden the city and its taxpayers with significant legal fees, something I believe we would all prefer to avoid. Beyond the legal aspect, the economic impact will be severe. Many small businesses rely on these machines for supplemental income. Losing their revenue could force closures, eliminate jobs, reduce sales tax income, and take away over half a million dollars in annual city fees. We are not outsiders. We are licensed, tax-paying members of this community. Most of our businesses operate, just a few machines is a small part of our services. Even though Police Chief has publicly stated that these locations certainly cannot be connected to major criminal activity. With that in mind, I respectfully urge the council to table this ordinance. Let's allow the current law to stand while awaiting clear direction from the state. This approach would avoid unnecessary hardship while honoring the process and following state-level regulation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I have, mayor.
All right, if there's no other comments, the public hearing is now closed. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number eight, please?
Thank you, mayor. Counsel to consider an ordinance amended in Article Six of the city of Beaumont's Code of Ordinances to prohibit gaming sites and gaming machines within the city limits. And there is no recommendation.
All right, is there a motion in a second for item number eight? It's... It's Councilmember Williams.
Move forward with the ban, second.
All right. Councilmember Crenshaw, there is a motion in a second for approval of item number eight. Is there any discussion? We've had quite a bit of discussion, so at this point, all those in favor of approving item number eight, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. At this point, we're going to recess into executive session, and we will return after that.
Thank you.
Please.
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner. Councilmember Duryo.
Yeah.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Here.
Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Sherwood. And Councilmember Crenshaw.
Here.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number two, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel to Consider Resolution Authorizing Sentiment of the Lawsuit Style Caleb Fenter and Beaumont Professional Firefighters Local 399 Interveners versus City of Beaumont, Christopher S. Boone, Kenneth Williams, Roy West, Earl White, Taylor Neeld, Mike Getz, Otwin Samuel, Charles Styrio, Abbott Turner, and Randy Fellshaw.
All right, is there a motion for item number two?
I make a motion, will you approve?
There is a second. Councilmember Williams. There is a motion and a second for approval of item number two, is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number three?
Counsel to Consider Approving a Resolution for a Three-Year Agreement with BCBS, which is Blue Cross Blue Shield, PRIME, for Pharmacy Benefit Manager Services for City Employees and Retirees, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number three?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number three, is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number four?
Counsel, consider a resolution, excuse me, authorizing a three-year contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas with an option for two additional years effective January one, 2026, for third-party administration of the city's self-funded preferred provider organization, PPO, medical and dental plans, that comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number four?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, that's Councilman Hilliard on the second, for approval of item number four, is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Councilman Duryo?
So, Madam City Attorney, on these deals here, does this affect retirees as well?
That'd be a question for your benefits coordinator. I think you should come to the mic.
Yeah. Yeah, we need the mic on. Oh, there it is.
It's on the mic.
Thank you.
It's on, uh.
Good now.
Good evening. Yes, it does, it will affect the retiree premiums. Remember that the retirees pay a percentage of the COBRA rates. When COBRA rates go up every year, so does the retiree medical premium.
Oh, I know that personally. But that's why I was asking, because I think I might have to recuse myself from this vote. I'm on, I'm on this insurance.
All right. Get that much money doing that?
Nothing.
All right, we, so we have Councilmember Duryo, recusing himself. Is there any other questions? Thank you. All in favor of approving item number four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number five, please?
Counsel, consider a resolution approving a contract with Woolpert, Inc., of Dayton, Ohio, for professional engineering services, traffic study, Highway 105, and Major Drive, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number five?
Move. Second.
There is a motion and a second on item number five, is there any discussion? Councilman Turner, then Councilman Crenshaw, and then Councilman Hilliard.
Kind of jumped out at me, you know, for quite some time, we've been talking about RFD Road and 105. I notice it says enhancing traffic for safety near RFD Road 105. Can you kind of explain what does that mean?
Certainly. The, the concerns about Highway 105 as they relate to RFD Road and also to Major Drive have been part of my attention since I joined Public Works. We have, I found correspondence all the way back to 2021 with TechSta when they performed their study of that intersection at RFD Road. City performed a separate study in 2022, and there's further complications by TechSta's corridor study of Major Drive. That corridor study was the entire length of FM 364, noted significant deficiencies of the intersection with Highway 105, and it, the recommendations had far-reaching implications from that intersection going east and west, north and south, but no recommendations. The generalized recommendations that it had were very high, high-level, expensive, and so I know all of our council members are contacted frequently about this intersection and the concerns about the turns, especially at RFD Road. So what we did is issued a request for qualifications for engineers to study 105 from the fire station that's on 105 all the way west to Keith Road, and then on the south side from, on Major Drive, from the LMBA Canal to about Griffin Road. So Encompass, this whole area has seen a lot of growth and development, those apartment complexes, we have new subdivisions coming in on RFD Road, and also we anticipate the possibility of Point Parkway north being constructed, and that would also intersect Highway 105 on the other side of the LMBA Canal Bridge from RFD Road. So rather than throwing a bunch of signals back-to-back-to-back, we want to have a comprehensive view, have this engineering firm evaluate it. We had four submittals, two of them scored extremely well. Woolpert did score the highest. They come with great references and even came to us with some recommendations already. So we have a strategic plan, so as growth continues in this area, we have a plan for whatever it needs to be, whether we have to do new signals, do we have to do raise medians, operational changes to the intersection at Major Drive at 105, just a comprehensive study of that entire area. That way, we, when we negotiate with TechSta for those signals, because we must remember Highway 105 and FM 364 are TechSta roads, so as we enter into that discussion, we have an engineering study to support our position.
So it's basically, but it's no guarantee based upon the results if TechSta is going to kind of approve or work with us or work with us to get that accomplished if the study comes out in a positive that we need this?
No guarantees at this time, but we want to position ourselves as strongly as we can.
Bring them back in front of court. We ain't coming back in front of court.
At a time.
Cal, did I call your name second? I think I did, Councilman.
I just, very briefly, to echo what Molly just said, this is a constant source of concerns. I've driven that stretch and gotten in the line to make the turn there across 105 on RFD. Certain times a day, it backs up 10, 15 cars, and then there was a lot of construction, shocker, on, you know, going to Lumberton, and you couldn't take the highway right there because of all the construction, and RFD kind of became a much, much more traveled route in the last year or two. And so anyway, thank you, staff, for putting this together, and I'm looking forward to this study.
Thank you.
All right, Councilman Hilliard said his question had been answered. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving item number five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, will you give us the reading of item six?
Counsel, consider a resolution authorizing a city manager to execute change order number one to the contract with C-Tex Construction Corporation of Beaumont for the Pine Street SWTP South Basin Sludge Strain Rehabilitation Project, and I think that's a sewer plant, SWTP.
Surface Water Treatment Plant.
Surface, oh, the opposite, Surface Water Treatment Plant.
Yes.
I apologize, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
All right, is there a motion for item number six?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number six, is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number seven?
Counsel, to consider an ordinance denying Texas Gas Service Company proposed rates, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the ordinance.
Is there a motion for item number seven?
So move to deny.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, Councilman Hilliard seconded. Is there any discussion on item number seven? Councilman Crenshaw?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just so I'm clear, what, what area of town does Texas Gas Service Company service?
I can't answer that.
Is it all of Beaumont? Okay. So like I have center point, and is this another option?
No. So it's, it's almost a part of, most of us have center point too, but it's through the utilities rep, so it will affect some Texas gas service companies, and I think it's, it could, they could be operating under a certain name, but if they supply gas to the other energies, it'll affect you as well.
Thank you.
Councilman Duryo?
Just for clarity, I guess, they, they made a motion to deny this ordinance, shouldn't we be approving the ordinance to deny?
Yes.
I guess we're not doing it.
But it's completely up to you.
All right, so let's get clarity on that. So we're approving this to deny.
I make the, make, I amend my original motion to approve the denial.
And I will second it again.
All right, so now that we have clarity on that, is there any other discussion? Thank you for that catch, Councilman Duryo. All those in favor of approving item number seven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is carried. With this, we're moving to Councilmember comments, and I'll remind you that we'll be back in 12 hours and 5 minutes for additional comments tomorrow. So with that, I will begin with Councilman Duryo.
Your comment.
Councilman Hilliard.
I only have one thing. Molly, where are we, where are we at on the quiet zones?
We are finishing up the drawings. I believe we were scheduled to turn them in late last week. We still don't have confirmation on the minutes of the diagnostic meetings, two to six weeks, we're still in that window, so we're still waiting to hear the final word on that, but we're proceeding with preparing the plans based on our understanding, and then if they come back with additional comments, we'll just make the revisions again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Turner?
I just, just wanted to kind of say thank you to staff, just, just working with us to kind of accomplish things that we want to accomplish, and I just want to just remind the body of the council, with this bond is not officially done. We have the option to, as you heard earlier, make suggestions or things that we might feel like maybe more feasible, so I, I just encourage just to be very active and participating when we meet on the bond, because it's literally gonna, we only have two more options before we have to make a final decision, so just really want you guys to be open and optimistic today, because the time is approaching quick, swiftly.
And for clarity, the August 5th meeting, we're not discussing it, the August 12th meeting, we are, and with that, we won't have another meeting if we get clear direction on the 12th, so it'll just be that one meeting, if we get resolution.
Correct. On the 12th, you'll be considering setting up the proposals, projects, and also calling an election.
Right.
You also have been a gen item to consider that if you decide to do so, and then we have a, after the 12th, if you don't decide something, we will have some time in there to call a special election if needed between the 12th and the 18th. Special meeting, what did I say, Chris? Oh, special meeting.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, sir.
Yeah, my second comment, and, and also on August 12th, if a project wanted to be moved from one particular area to another particular area, is that possible that we can discuss that as well, or options as far as placement of a project?
As Mr. Gordon said, you, you can do as you choose as a council, as a board, you can structure this any way you want to, as you see fit as a council, you have the final say on it.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a clarification? Is it possible to have a bond workshop? Would anything prevent us from doing that?
No.
So we don't vote on the bond workshop?
I get we wouldn't vote there, but we could openly discuss like what we want to do and a path forward, that way there would be a lot more clarification moving into the 12th when we do vote, if we've been able to give input and do all that.
You could do that at the 12th. There's nothing that prevents you from discussing a posted item openly?
Did someone tell me they're not going to be here on the 12th?
Yeah, we got two council people.
Okay, so we can't be here. That's why I was proposing a workshop that would be separate from a council meeting that could be anytime between now and the 12th, that would fit everyone's schedule.
I think the problem would be next week, we've got two council members out, so we wouldn't be able to get it later this week, and we're moving into Tuesday of the following week.
I know.
So we'd have a workshop on the Monday before our council meeting on Tuesday.
Perfect. Can we do that?
If the council wishes so, we'll, we'll work on scheduling one.
I'm just thinking, this is a huge issue with a lot to discuss, and...
But that 12th meeting, this will be it. It, it's a special called meeting that will just be addressing these issues.
Yes, only issue item, but I think Councilmember Crenshaw is saying he wants some discussion before he has to vote that day, maybe, uh, PRIME meeting.
And I agree with the discussion, I'm, I'm just thinking, one day or that day, we're going to be able to make those changes, I don't know that we're going to get, be able to get a whole lot of additional, but if, if there's a consensus for a workshop, uh, the day before, on Monday.
Well, I, I'm okay with it, because we pushing up on that timeline pretty quickly, yeah.
I don't have to make myself available.
What's that day, before?
That's the 11th.
Oh, 11 before the 12th.
I, I'm, I won't, I, I may, I'll, if I can get a flight back the day before, I'm going to be gone, but if not, Councilman, the Mayor Pro Tim could lead that, and I may be able to get a flight the day before.
We've been waiting on that day.
So Mayor, just, Mayor, did you remind me that we have a Historic Landmark Commission meeting here in council chambers that's been scheduled for 3:30? 3:30 on the 11th.
Workshop like at 1?
We could, could we just poll the council on when you're available and try to get something that y'all can be there?
Yeah. Nobody, y'all are both out next week.
Maybe not even that day. Okay, Kathy will be contacting you with your availability.
Okay, we'll get it, we'll get it from that way to make sure, and I can work on moving my flight a day early. So, all right, and then Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Sherwood?
I'd like to thank staff for all the work that they've done on the bond and all the things, because all things bond have been difficult, well, challenging opportunities, nevertheless. I work with youth that have been trafficked, and trafficking is a huge, terrible, traumatic, long-lasting effect, so I am praying for all the victims that have been trafficked, and I appreciate the work that they're doing, and, and as, as far as youth trafficking is, is concerned, that's an issue that's near and dear to my heart. August 13th is the first day at school, I'm praying for all the teachers, students, and staff, because I know y'all gonna need it. God bless y'all hearts and y'all other body parts. Hurricane preparedness, we want to make sure that we are hurricane-ready, and remember insurance is money when it matters most, remember to make sure that you're checking your policies and that you are always ready and prepared. It was a lovely day in Beaumont today, and I'm happy to be working on behalf of you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sherwood. Councilman Crenshaw?
Hard to follow that up, but I, my biggest concern was the request for the workshop, so I do appreciate my fellow council members being willing to entertain that, and I, I, with that said, that's all I've got, because I know we're ready to go. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
No comment.
Sorry, I'm between y'all and dinner, but I did want to point out with TechStot's refreshed spirit of cooperation, we, they have asked us to attend a meeting tomorrow, late tomorrow afternoon. My understanding is it is going to have introductions amongst city and key TechStot staff, as well as discussing some of the challenges that he alluded to on the I-10 project. There's been a lot of movement on that, you'll see that on the next council agenda, so I hope that we have a short, sweet, and productive meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you.
No comment.
Mr. City Manager?
Just a reminder, 9:00 AM tomorrow morning, we'll be having a budget workshop, we anticipated going from 9:00, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
All right, and Councilman Duryo always has the last say.
So if that meeting with TechStot tomorrow, it's not a posted meeting, so we can't have four people there, correct?
Yeah. All right, and with that, tomorrow is our polo day, city polo day for council, if you have that available, so that it's be a bit more casual, since we're going to have budget hearing, and with that, the meeting is adjourned. See you in the morning.